On board. I am today and just wanted to let you know we're now on air. So the turning the mic over to you now.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, May ninth, Washington County Board of Commissioners work session. We're expecting Commissioner Roy Rogers shortly. Thank you to staff for changing the arrangements for today's meeting, given that we had the Budget Committee meeting last night. It was nice to have a little flexibility this morning. So first thing on the agenda is board communication. Who would like to go first?
Not me because I didn't even read my notes yet.
I'll go first. It's been all budget, all the time for me pretty much since our meetings. Last week, we had a very successful and productive Clean Water Services Budget Committee meeting all day on Friday. Just diving into the Washington County proposed budget. And I'm starting my work with Commissioner Rogers to craft the Performance Review for the Clean Water Services CEO, which we need to get done and delivered before the end of January. I'm also working on Board Planning. As I mentioned at a recent Tuesday Business Meeting, we have This growing list of things that's coming our way after we get through budget. So it feels like the July tsunami and I'm hoping to replace a tsunami experience with just A steady volume of work for us through the end of the year. So learning more At our roundtable meeting of June first, We'll go over a bunch of that in order to figure out a plan that will address the needs of the two agencies While hopefully chart a course for the next year of getting through that work. So that's it for me. Who's next?
I can go next.
Ready?
No, keep reading. Good afternoon, everyone. In terms of my my board update, yes, Diane, we had a successful budget day. And I was just chatting during my lunchtime with Mark. Perhaps next year we can break it down to two days, but I don't. We can, it just felt like a lot every year, but This, this is the first year I was reflecting what could be and look forward to that discussion. I'll fill out the survey that will be coming out. And last week I also Attended the Beaverton Chamber of Commerce does Meet and greet with elected officials and I did that this month and I was it. And it was a really good Meeting and a lot of the questions from the business community members were focused on Budget as you can expect. And a lot of the stuff around the ARPA, the Budget County, and We really talked good about the county administrator, how you were able to present a balanced budget and people really felt The leadership and appreciated that. So thank you. And you know, there were, there were like kudos to the county administrator for presenting a balanced budget around The shortfall of the 25 million people reading. And then yesterday was AOC's Health and Human Services Committee. There's a lot of The committee recommended support a lot of bills that were on at the agenda and Afternoon. Senate Bill 1097, which is the liability mitigation for court order, Community Mental Health Services. The committee chose to support that. And then House Bill 3610, which is establishes task force on alcohol pricing and addiction services. But the community, the committee supported with an amendment to add a seat for Public Health Prevention Expert. And then there was a support for the 2420, House Bill 2420A, the amendment. And this creates a work group to propose options for equitable access to birth and death certificates throughout the state. And equitable fee revenue to maintain and improve vital record system. And then we had a really great discussion around 2506, which is the Supervising Bill for Mental Health and Addiction Residential Facilities. That was a robust conversation and to be continued. And, and then the other conversation we had was Commissioner Daniel Bethel Submitted couple letters to the committee. And one of the letter was to the Members of the Association of Oregon Counties and she, this was around Adverse consequences to counties due to the September 1, 2022 federal court order limiting commissions To and shortening treatment at the Oregon State Hospital. Washington County was mentioned a lot in that meeting and How we're collaborating with Marion County. And then yesterday Commissioner Bethel sent another letter because there was a strong interest to join to the federal lawsuit. And, and then The other update I have that was Yesterday, we had a WCCC works workshop. It is really, so WCCC meets two hours every, every month, but this one was about an hour long. And this is the prep work for the Joint Metro and JPAC Workshop on Draft RTP Project List. And it was a really good discussion and you know, Washington County has the most We're doing great on those project lists. 21% of our requests of our 89 projects are about walking and biking. And then we have about 72% of On our projects are roads and bridges. So I'll look forward to discussion on the JPAC and In terms of future meeting, that is JPAC coming up. With that, With 40 seconds left, I turn it to the next person.
All right. Thank you.
I'd like to go last, so.
Okay. Roy will be next after me. Check your personal email. So yeah, I had obviously lots of meetings, Clean Water Services last week. I had, we are going to be appointing Don Otamont to the Northwest Act and I had lunch with him yesterday to kind of go over a few things. That was always interesting. And a transportation conversation with Don.
You're going for the presumptive close, huh?
Well, let's just say.
On our work session agenda next.
I know. Am I getting ahead of you on this?
All of us. I'm just teasing you.
So I'll go back and tell him. Also had a call with Stia's Salmonberry Trail Foundation's Executive Director Caroline. And we've got a Stea Board and, and an executive meeting coming up this Thursday where we're going to be trying to Move ahead a little bit on some plans for the trail. So that'll be Fun time. I have a meeting this week with Peter Brandon, who's the City Manager, Cornelius. Matt Upden Calder From Astound regarding cell coverage on Highway six. We are having a safety on six meeting today that I can't attend as well. So I'll give you a briefing on that because I know you were having conversations with David Yamamoto about the cell towers and Some of that stuff on six. So I'll let you know what the latest and greatest on that is.
Thank you.
WCVA Reception, Visitors Association Reception coming up, I think. Yeah, you're speaking. I get to listen to you.
Again.
I almost said this. I said that wrong, didn't I? Yeah, the Coal Pack Northwest Act, GPI Clean Water Services Executive Briefing is coming up. I'm doing some things with Clean Water Services is Is we're doing a gig with GPI. So looking forward to that as well. And then on Saturday is the Intel VIP Tour at nine, I think. I don't know how many others to go into that. But yeah, so looking forward to that. Haven't been Behind the scenes for a few years. So good to get nothing. So that's all. I'm afraid to go next because you're going to get all of my time.
I'm, I think I'm going to take some airtime, so.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll make a short, there are not a lot to report. We all know each other's schedules. We've been Doing it in our Weekly updates. Plus, I think we've seen each other every day for about the last four or five days.
I know. Can you stand it?
No, I got work to do.
Just frightens my every morning.
Yeah. Not you so much. It's just when you're trying to run a business and also do this, it's very, very, very.
Bad habit.
Yeah. I can get no sympathy. I think No sympathy at all. I would Add a couple of things. When Pam and I are going to assist in regard to a Hire at CWS is Friday, and I think that was on our agenda. Thursday, I've got the meeting of the Governance Committee of WE, not Governance, Government Committee of WE.
Relation.
I go listen. Yeah, it's only about two blocks from my office, which is interesting. And I would just put a little seed in your mind and most of you probably aren't going to agree with me, but that's fine. It would be nice if we somehow consolidate some of our budget meetings. I mean, this thing of every night having a budget meeting is cumbersome, to say the least, and especially when you Hear how many people are participating from the outside world and I have more on my block than ever participate, just right live. So it'd be nice if we could sort of do, not exactly the Clean Water Service model, but something that would Give us maybe a day and then a couple of night meetings so that It would be easier on some of us. So I'm speaking for myself. But should I have some silence now so Pam can't have all my time?
You keep going if you'd like.
Oh, I don't have anything to say. I just didn't want.
And I, it's not that big a deal, but I did, I just wanted to have a discussion with us after I do my report. So that's why.
Mr. Treese.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. There, this past week I've had a couple constituent meetings, one around other Climate discussion and another From Member of our community that's interested in holding a barn dance to honor the, the wingspan. So, and I just want to say that Rachel, I don't know if Rachel's with us today, but she was great in helping me Navigate that and to discuss with the constituent, what, you know, what our options are there. We, I did attend the AOC Legislative and Board of Directors meeting yesterday. Commissioner Bye talked about the meetings, I think in the morning that fed up to the Legislative Committee and The only thing that it was a really quick legislative meeting for us. Chair was there as well. It, we, we did get advice from Erin Doyle to take both Senate Bill 1096, House Bill 3620 Off of the, the slate to approve and to vote no against them. And the, the reason is that they were basically It, it's fast tracking small pieces of land into the UGB and we hadn't had a discussion here and it wasn't.
What were those again?
It's, it's. Just the Senate bill, the House bill died. Yes, thank you. Do you want to talk about it? Number, it's Senate Bill number 1096. It's, it's the one that allows for fast track UGB.
Oh, yes. Okay, now I know.
Yeah. Outside of metro, inside of metro.
Yeah.
You have 30 days to. And the, and Catherine did a good job of explaining our situation is different than the majority of the state and we, we Ended up voting no on that, but it did pass. So. The other interesting thing about the Ledge Committee meeting of yesterday is we were the only county representatives there from the three metro counties.
No, Mark Shaw was there.
Oh, yes, that's right. He was in attendance. He did vote. Yeah. But I, other than that, it was.
Yep.
There was nobody from Monloma County. Commissioner Yamamoto brought his concerns about the potential of House Bill 2301 and And that not passing due to the Republican walkout and that is the He's concerned that we might, may lose out on the up to $700 million for broadband. And so that was, that was a point of discussion. And you talked about the make us brief. What, just as an announcement, Megan Chenard is leaving AOC. So if you work with her, she's going to the Seed Alliant Cooperative Board, Board, something, you know, so anyway. And AOC is planning their retreat for the Legislative Committee in Klamath in September. This week I've got the WCVA reception. I'll be making welcoming remarks there. I've got the M-PAC Coordinating Committee meeting. And then as we mentioned, we've got the 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 title is Clean, it's Clean Water Services Utility Chief Utility. CUOO, thank you. And I'm going to the Intel VIP Tour on Saturday. Couple of things that I wanted to bring up separately is I'm going to be working with Megan and with the other Representatives from the two county, the two other metro counties to work on District Eight Meeting this fall. So I'm just making that public announcement because the chair reminded me that I hadn't done any work on that yet and I Is on our calendar. So I started to get nervous about that. But make the public statement helps me get motivated here. And then the other thing that I wanted to bring up that I might, we might want to discuss here is that as I've been going through the budget and looking at The different pieces, I've been reminded that our Our administrative leadership is not going to be taking their cola. And the, we're, we're limiting coal To 3.5%. At least we are proposing to limit the cola to 3.5%. We have not had a, for non-represented, thank you, for non-represented, thank you for The, but we haven't had a discussion here and I'm proposing that we also not take our colas If our leadership is doing the same thing. So I wanted to have the discussion Here because we haven't had an opportunity to do that. And I thought it was appropriate to, to talk about it amongst ourselves. So my And I just opened up for any thoughts?
My comment is that would send a wonderful message. You can't tell administrative staff to Honker down and then we do something different. I understand it.
That's my point.
Yeah. If you're ruling against colas in general, I, I, I still like drinking them. So that, that, I don't think that's what you're doing. No, but I think your message, you're all getting excited. I'm all for it.
Yep. And then I, you know, if we're all in agreement, I just wanted to be able to Come to the Budget Committee and say that. Are any thoughts?
I think that Tom was raising them.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do have it. I have a concern. The Charter says that the Salary Commission sets your salary. They have been apprised of these facts and they're considering them today. So.
We approved the budget.
You do approve the budget, but I'd be worried about a precedent where the board overrides the Salary Commission. The whole idea of the Salary Commission.
As the whole state.
Yeah, it bothers me, but I mean, obviously you can do, this is just advice. You can do whatever you like, but It does, it does set a precedent that the board, because it doesn't say that they advise, it doesn't say, it says they set your salary.
Yep.
That's the language that was approved.
And we get to vote if we adopt it in the budget or not.
I, I.
Yep. And, and, and I think that it's important for us, if, if in fact we're in agreement here, it's important for us to appreciate And respect the Salary Commission and send that message to them, but at the same time, let them know that we will be adopting a budget That does not include a coal for us. But so I, I understand what you're saying, but I think we can still navigate this and we Even though I mean, I understand what you're saying in terms of what their, what their role is, but I think they would appreciate and respect what our situation is there too. That's my guess.
I understand both positions. Only caveat I would have, my own personally, I think that message should come from the Chair of the Board.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, not a gay commissioner saying, I think we ought to consider that.
I'm not, I'm not, I am just raising the issue.
I'm not supportive of this.
No, no, what you were saying that you were going to introduce it. I just thought that, yeah.
Well, she is here.
No, I thought at the Board, at the Budget Committee.
No, no, no.
Oh, I see. Okay. My misunderstanding.
What do you think, Jerry?
I'm good with this.
Okay.
Yep, everybody. You have majority, so let's go with majority. Okay.
Are you opposed?
I'm not opposed. I'm interested in waiting to see what the community recommends and not get ahead of the process, but It looks like you are for votes, so.
Thank you. Because we heard last night, as the Chair of the Budget Committee put it, She's not above kicking the can to the Board of Commissioners. So it's like, okay, well. Oh, well. So. So I'm certain my five minutes is up. Okay, leadership communication, Ms. Angie.
Your update, Chair?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, I heard it.
Yeah, I'm losing track. I'm dreaming of numbers.
It's all budget all the time.
I am, I'm dreaming of numbers.
They have your process.
Yeah, actually on.
I dreamt of the budget Sunday night. It was really awful.
Uh, yes, I actually.
I'm still curious about that dream. Oh.
So I did share with some staff that I also dreamt of the first Budget Committee meeting and I delivered Last year's budget message instead of this current year and Chair, you said, Ms. Angie, You're delivering last year's budget. We've already adopted that. Please deliver this year's budget message and Philip, Julie were in the background trying to stop me.
This is in your dream. This is all dream.
I think you all need to think about what you eat before you go back.
I want to share a special election update. The resignation of the Secretary of State, I think, and will have no impact On our election administration in Washington County. Although state law designates the Secretary of State as the Chief Elections Officer of the State of Oregon, each of the 36 counties Are responsible for managing their own voter roles And conducting their own elections. Changes in personnel or leadership at the state really have no impact on this role and the role of the county. So once again, this upholds just voter competence in the special election and I want to extend a great Appreciation to our Assessment and Taxation Department Elections Division for their continued excellence in serving democracy. The current state district election has no statewide contest or legislative contest. The role of the Secretary of State's Election Division in the current election is largely limited to maintaining the voter registration and election management database system And assisting with reporting results through the statewide reporting system. To date, the division has issued over 393,000 ballots for this current election And is currently engaged in the smooth and orderly process of verifying signatures, accepting ballots and communicating with voters whose ballot signatures don't match the signatures on file. We are projecting a voter turnout of 20% for this election, which is aligned with similar odd year elections.
That is wow.
And that concludes my update. Only one item.
Any certification that has to be done by this day? And will that delay it?
No, there will be no delays due to this investigation.
Good morning, Mr. Carr. No.
Good afternoon.
Dreams?
No.
I don't think he would dream of that.
Lawsuit.
As Commissioner Fine noted, things are happening in the Disability Rights Oregon lawsuit involving aid and assist. Today is actually an important day. Today's the day when language is supposed to be submitted on the transport issue. And I'll remind you, the transport issue is Erose in Marion County where a judge issued an order precluding the sheriff from transporting any patients from the hospital. With certain patients, identified patients, and it was only three originally. I think it's nine now. Who had not, who, who the judge was concerned about their current state and asked that the hospital provide an update on their current state. The hospital has refused to do that and the judge has refused to allow them to be transported. This put the Marion County Sheriff in a very difficult situation. The plaintiffs moved for a federal order directing the sheriff to transport the patients. That would put the sheriff in a position of, who is not a party in the litigation Of either disobeying a federal court order or a state court order, which is not a good place for a sheriff to be. So Marion County objected. There was a hearing and the judge gave the parties till today to resolve it. We, the, the state had The state had, I think, may agree to the language that provides the updates, which will make the issue go away. That is when a court requests an update, that all patients will, will, will be accompanied by some Information about their current state. And then this transport issue will go away. If the judge, however, or it issues the original order that is directing the sheriffs, There may be further litigation by the counties and I will keep you apprised of that. We may have to do an executive session On how, how we participate in that because it may involve additional litigation that we take or take. But hopefully the, the plaintiffs will submit an order or delay. When I talked to them last week, we talked about a little bit more time. They were trying to determine the numbers for some of the things and We may have a resolution on this, but I'm kind of on the periphery since we're not a party, we're an amicus. So there are discussions among the parties, the parties or the state and the Disability Rights Organization and the public defenders, not us.
You know, one of the things that impresses me in this long journey on these, on the lawsuits and orders is From what I can tell, everyone involved in these discussions Their working process and questions and issues. But With all of that, always remember we're talking about people, humans. And it, in every one of your report outs, whether it's written or verbal, it always comes through. So thank you.
It, it, that is a tremendous point, Chair Harrington, that these are individuals who need help. And we tend to get painted as the people who want to prosecute them because we're aligned with the DA and the sheriff. We're also the, the, the organization that has to care for them when they're in our jail. And that's, the jail is not a place for someone who's seriously mentally ill.
Yep.
And so we, we're, we're working on both sides, but I, I think that most people understand that the counties have the interests of the patients at heart. And we've, and so as, as Commissioner Fine noted, Marion County has reached out to other counties and we have had other counties expressing interest. And so we may have bigger participation in this.
Yeah, Monloma County was expressing interest that the, the AOC's Helping Human Services Committee, the steering committee, so I think they joined that. I had a, I didn't know that there's 55 Washington County, the number Is it appropriate to say client or?
Patients. There were no hospital, I called the patients. Their AICs when they're in jail.
Sheriff's involved, like it's just the terminologies. I, I had no idea the 55 individual clients, patients in The state hospital from Washington County, which is, which puts us to top three, you know, one of the top three.
Yeah.
That was, um.
Well, we are the, we're the top two, no, population of the county. So it's not surprising that we're top three in population.
Yeah, well, it was 55 seems like right after Lane County. And felony versus misdemeanor. And then there's that request for misdemeanors not to be trans, like Seemed a lot of complications and I have a lot of questions for Marnie not here.
And I'm happy to sit down with you and work through some of that. If you look at that chart closely, you'll see that Washington County is almost unique and that our, you know, as I recall, our population of state hospital almost exactly mirrors our population in the state. Other, other.
Marion County identified Washington County after seeing these data numbers. I see because we have the biggest
Yes.
Case for it.
Yes.
You're working with Marion County Legal Counsel on this.
Yes, very closely.
Yeah. Commissioner Treese, correct me if I'm wrong, but at the Was it the Ledge Committee or the Board meeting?
I think she wrote it up both times.
Yeah. But particularly at the Board meeting, even though it was on the agenda, She seemed unprepared To.
And she being Daniel Bethel.
Yes. Yes. Uh, Commissioner from Marion County.
Excuse me?
Seemed unprepared to speak, to represent her Board and Legal Counsel, and then other commissioners didn't seem prepared, even though it had been on the agenda. It was very odd.
Very confusing.
It was odd. So I don't know why there's inconsistency between the level of conversation that happened at the HHS Steering Committee and then the Ledge Committee and the Board of Directors, but we got through it nonetheless.
And I'm really glad that the Chair, well, I think I brought it up with, with you a couple meetings ago and then the Chair followed up even before the, the Board Meeting yesterday. So just knowing that you're involved and on top of this, my confidence is very high.
Yeah, and there to, for the Steering Committee, I think that conversation was different. I don't know what happened at the other meeting, but this one, the DA was there, the District Attorney, I think, and the level of staff that we're working with. So I know the letter says the Board of Marion County, but the conversation was from the subject matter expert.
So the second thing I wanted to just bring up to speed on was a short, and the Sullis Road property, we have moved for contempt. Rob Bovette brought a motion for contempt yesterday. Mr. Beschard is in jail and has been since early April, I believe.
Since early April.
Yeah, he assaulted one of his neighbors or he's accused of assaulting one of his neighbors. So he's being held. So our, our contempt proceeding won't have anything to do with that. I, I believe there may in fact be a total of four cases now between various violations in our contempt motion. So Rob is working on that diligently and I'll keep you apprised.
Wow. Saga continues.
Yeah, and there's still more cleanup, I understand, to be done at the property, even though we've, we've spent a lot of time, two hundred tons of pretensible waste has been removed. There's more there, so. They're working on it. And you know, Tom McElston and his team is amazing and they've done a great job.
Does it continue? I thought that the, the wave of work to stabilize the worst of the worst was done.
Yes.
Though there continues to be an inordinate amount of general term garbage, not to be confused with pretensible waste or anything else.
Well, there's things that we can't remove like cars, which are, you know, we could, we could, if it's a nuisance, we can move pretensible waste.
Yep.
Because it's, it's a nuisance, but a car is not necessarily a nuisance.
Yep.
So that's.
There's lots of material there, I guess. It's a better.
Things that, that we can't remove is, is, yes.
Yeah. Yep.
That's my report. Thank you. I always get the cheery stuff, I guess.
One question of you.
Sir.
Not going to be able to answer it today, but I just want you to think about it. With the new chat GPT technology, we can listen to anybody and make them say anything that would be, that we want them to say. And our public meetings are all obviously listened to. We record them. Should we have disclaimers at the beginning or end or in between? They say, uh, you know, this is a public recording, could be used for anything else and that's, maybe I'm being paranoid, but I'm listening to a lot of stuff on this now and I'm going, wow, I could take your voice and have you say things that you never said. And then I suspect the county would need to defend you, just like they would need to defend us. Unless there's something in there that says it, you know, this, this is a, this is official recording, any other use is not permitted or, kind of like you do with NFL games or NBA games. You can't, you can watch them, but you can't do anything else with them.
I've never looked. I'd be surprised if there isn't something already, but.
Yeah.
So a couple of things.
Yeah.
Board. You certainly can have a follow-up conversation with Mr. Carr on this.
I will.
If, if you're asking today for board direction, if we want to, okay.
No.
All right, great. Thank you. We'll move on. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Wait, no, wait till you hear what you say.
I can only imagine. I hope they make me look better in that talking head though.
May I ask a quick question? From my seat here, I noticed that our flags are flying at half-staff. And I'm just curious.
Governor ordered it a couple of days ago after the mass shooting in Texas, I think it was, or was it the place that same day or the day before or, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Alan, Texas.
There you go. Thank you. Diane?
Thank you, Chair Harrington, and good afternoon, noon, Board of Clean Water Services. I beg your pardon, the team was calling me on Teams. I thought I had it muted, but I got to it quick, but when Bob Baumgartner calls, I usually pay attention. So, but thank you. There's been heavy rainstorms and rainfall. You probably experienced it around the region. It's generated many calls for service in the unincorporated areas. The, the team is coordinating with LUT. I'm going to call Mark Jockers up for a little bit. Field Operations reports that the unincorporated areas of Caroline, Jamison and Homewood areas. I wanted to make sure that the board knew where they were. They're low.
Chair, no, a little bit south of that. So it's off Shoals Ferry Road near Portland Golf Course. So it's kind of an area that's bounded by Shoals Ferry. It's behind Jesuit High School. And it's a neighborhood, Jamison, Homewood.
Yep.
Caroline. It was built prior to the requirements to install any stormwater systems. So this is an, it's an area that acts like an urban area, but was built like a rural area in a lot of ways. Some of the area, some of the neighborhood is within the flood plain as well. It's, uh, homes were probably built in the sixties and seventies predominantly.
So this is between Shoals Ferry and Beaverton Hills to Hyatt.
Right.
Okay.
And the other, yeah, and the other, Jamison goes.
Jamison is the connector. Yeah.
And we've had flooding on and off over in that location for, for decades, frankly. It's gotten more severe with these more intense rainstorms. Mr. Dean Kohler has been in touch with the Board a couple of times, having to do with the amount of water that's going through the back of his property right now. We continue to meet and communicate with those neighbors, but there, there isn't a stormwater system there at this time. It's one of the issues that we've identified as a key initiative that we'd like to talk to the Board about, these unincorporated areas that are lacking stormwater systems. How are we going to address drainage in those, in those particular neighborhoods?
So right now they're experiencing home with basement flooding, garage flooding, property flooding in their yards. Some of the homes were located in what used to be a drainage area, so they're flooding because the water is following the old drainage pathway. Gravels washing into the roadways, the ditch and lets are getting plugged with debris. So the team is responding from an emergency management standpoint to support their neighbors. But as Mark said, we're going to bring an item to the Board to frame what the issue is with these developments that were that have, they don't have modern infrastructure systems and they're dependent on culverts, ditches and private pipelines that were kind of rolled into the, the past ditches. So they're built prior to drainage standards. The local stormwater fees are designed to primarily provide maintenance to the public system and has very limited capital funds to address the significant need for an area like Caroline, Jamison and Homewood. Typically, local improvement districts are used, so the neighbors would fund it. But it's really rare that the upstream neighbors who aren't experiencing the flooding want to participate in issues that are impacting their downstream neighbors. So it's a bit of a sticky wicket and we have some ideas that could potentially support these issues, but you know, modern developments have full curb gutter detention, water quality and pipeline systems.
That's why the SDCs are what they are and the building fees are what they are.
And it's really, you know, our SDCs for stormwater are on the order of six hundred dollars. You know, they're pretty modest because the developments are building the infrastructure that's needed. But I did want to acknowledge the neighbor's issues. He's posted on YouTube and, and it, it's, he's asking for help. And the question is, how can we find solutions when there's no capital funds to help them upgrade? So.
So when you prepare something for the Board, though, I'm, on one hand, I am certainly empathetic for the local community. But we're also in the situation where they're one of many urban unincorporated areas and so I would want a comprehensive look at where all these sensitive areas all across the Clean Water Services service shed.
Yes.
I think we'd like to provide you with kind of a heat map of where those locations are. There are some people that have flooded for so many years, they don't bother calling any longer. They sandbag. It's areas in Aloa, it's Tropicana, which is off Butner. There's places that are really severe there, but providing that heat map to show you where that lack of infrastructure will be an important part of the discussion.
Good. General question. No, that's fine. It, it, under, I remember when we gave Clean Water Services wonderful tasks. I used to be with the county and said, hey, you can take a storm drain runoff and I'm not certain that you applauded that action, but it, they did it. Board did it. Within our charge, do we have to take care of these issues? I mean, that's really the question, whether you can have an LID or service charge. Or is there an anticipation of we're responsible? I'm talking about now we be, you know, that we're responsible, so we have to come up with a fix. Do we have to?
That's a great governance question that we're going to be talking to you about the original stormwater, how the fees were constructed. Because the only way right now for these projects to be built is truly an LID.
No, we're asking a different question. Does EPA require us or does state law require us?
Probably not.
Okay.
What, what is required of us is that, is having to do with a public drainage system. So the municipal separate stormwater system, that's an MS four, right? So.
Private systems. Yeah. So it's, you know, that it's a.
I do. I just didn't want to come back. So you might want your legal counsel to look and say, do we have any state DEQ, EPA, and any sort of overarching responsibility?
Uh huh.
Right.
Or is it the county's responsibility because they were the one who permitted it and then they transferred those assets?
Oh, complicated question. Well.
If, if one of these neighborhoods exists in Hillsborough or Beaverton or Tigard or Twelton, in any of the cities, are they required to do something about it or just say, sorry, your little neighborhood was built in the nineteen fifties before there was stormwater? We can help you put that local improvement district together.
That's the typical answer. Yeah.
Okay. Yep. Well, as long as you bring all that to us.
Yeah.
I'll reserve the right to get smarter.
But you know, when you look at his video, you can see why he is having a problem.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I totally empathize with that.
But the solutions are tough. It takes capital. And then the creeks are full. There's even more of a problem because detention is needed and how it's been developed, there's no emphasis for detention other than on their private properties.
Yes.
It's.
Cloud bursts are going to.
Yeah, it's getting worse. So. But, but thank you. And we are responding as best as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you for the Board and the Budget Committee for your work with us on the writing. We really appreciate it.
Great. Well, we don't have a Board Meeting today, so that's it for Board and Leadership Communication. So we'll segue into our first agenda topic, the Northwest Area Commission on Transportation Community Member Appointment.
Hello, Board. Thank you for having us. I'm Jessica Pell's Policy Analyst and.
I'm Stacy Schotler, County Engineer. I'm also the alternate for Commissioner Willie on the Northwest Act.
We're here today to talk about the Northwest Area Commission on Transportation Citizen at Large Appointment, otherwise known as the Northwest Act. The Northwest Act is one of twelve area commissions on transportation that were created by the Oregon Transportation Commission in an advisory role for transportation policy and project priorities, particularly related to the statewide transportation improvement program. And there is one going on right now, looking at the twenty-four to twenty-seven statewide transportation improvement program. The Northwest Act includes all of Clatsup, Tillamook and Columbia Counties and then the western part of Washington County, including the City of Banks. The bylaws allow for up to twenty-nine members representing counties, cities, other agency partners, and then two citizen at large positions per county. Members serve two terms and can be reappointed and there are no term limits. Our representation on the Northwest Act includes a county commissioner, to, actually one representative and one member from City of Banks, and then our two citizen at large positions. Our current roster, as Stacy said, includes Commissioner Willie as our county representative and then Stacy as his alternate. We have Marsha Kirk and Jolynn Becker as member and alternate from City of Banks. And then we have Michael Borison as our citizen at large rep, and he has served since two thousand and eleven. And then we have one vacant spot. We advertise for our vacant position through county media releases, the county's weekly community engagement connections e-update and the LUT News Weekly Newsletter. We also asked our partners at the City of Banks to advertise the vacant position to their networks so we could get more representation. And we ultimately received four applicant, four applicants for the vacant citizen at large. After reviewing the applications, we determined that one applicant did not live in the Northwest Act boundary. One withdrew for personal reasons and then Stacy and I interviewed the remaining two applicants. Staff's recommendation is to employ Donald Odermott to the vacant citizen at large position on the Northwest Act to serve through December twenty twenty-three. And additionally, we'd like to request the Board direct us to advertise both positions again at the end of the year so we can align the two positions' terms. So we'll, so the position we're appointing now would go through December and then we'd do them both at the same time for the twenty-four to twenty-five term. And that concludes our presentation.
So I'll jump in. I have no problem with saying yes to either of the recommendations. What I want to point out is in the applicant profiles for Don Odermott, it says it, he has been professionally involved, yet other publicly available information shows that he's doing work associated with Devon, David Evans. And I don't know if he's still doing his contract work. So I just want us to be a little careful about using past tense. I would have a problem if we were talking about the Region One Act, given his professional involvement.
Yeah, I think, I think that his application came in before he started at David Evans. So there was, I think that's why the delay is there.
So we'll have to update before we do the appointment. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all.
Because I was wondering, I was like, that's not, yeah. Thank you for that contact. I was wondering, Dave.
I had a curiosity. It's just my curiosity. Why aren't other cities outside the Region One in Washington County, outside Region One boundaries? Why aren't they included? You said, you said there's two from Banks, is that right? How about Gaston?
So Gaston is a little bit of a conundrum. It originally was included in the boundary and then so this is where we need Chris here. She has all the history of this in her head. She talked with Region One about Gaston being as part of Region One to follow more the maintenance boundary or to participate in the Midland Valley Act because of how the county boundary is and then the maintenance boundaries. So I think it is technically in Region One Act. Not the Northwest Act, but the boundary is apparently a little bit fuzzy.
Well, are there any other cities that are in Washington County and in the Northwest Act?
No, there are not. There's only urban, not even urban, unincorporated, unincorporated communities like Timber.
But it, the, the boundaries, the, the first slide you started, it does say Western Washington County. So there's cities, like even though it's not a city, like Bethany or further Aloa.
So those are in Region One Act.
Region.
The boundary goes along the west part of North Plains to the Dersham Interchange and then it skirts around Forest Grove Cornelius.
I see. Yeah.
We're very particular.
Trying to sneak in more, but I see what you're doing. But when you first presented the Western State, Washington County, I was thinking.
Well, Forest Grove is the geographical center of Washington County.
Interesting. I've never heard that before, but that's interesting.
Well, I only picked it up from former Forest Grove Mayor Richard Kidd. So something he would, it may be factually incorrect, but that's where I heard it first.
We appoint that, that's not the Northwest Act.
Our, our citizen at large positions?
Yeah.
That's right. Yeah, the bylaws say the county appoints the citizen at large.
WCCC does it on the.
Yeah. But isn't that for the business person?
It is.
Point all their own mayors.
Yeah, the cities.
I think the Region One Act bylaws say that the cities together support the member for the R1 Act, so they usually use the WCC as the forum.
Does it all?
Yeah.
And it doesn't have to be like a city council member or?
They don't do it all.
For R1 Act?
No, the R1 Act, it's what.
That's what.
Northwest.
The Northwest Act, no, there, because there is the city member representing the City of Banks and then the citizen at large represents other interests.
Very interesting.
Yeah.
Acts are different.
Everywhere.
Yep. Varies by act. Are the rest of us all good?
Yeah, we're good.
Yep. Okay, great.
I think it'd be good if, once we officially, so I don't get ahead of the train again, once we officially do appoint Don, then it'd be, it'd be good if you and I him, just bring him up to speed. Because he's really knowledgeable about what goes on out here, but not so much on the western side of the act.
Will do.
Will this be a consent agenda next Tuesday?
It'll be on your May 23rd consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty.
When, I think we should also thank Don for doing this. So, you know, I just want to publicly say I appreciate the fact that he's offered to do this.
Next up, American for Disabilities Act. Ms. Tillman and Liz Morris. Hi. Watch out, Ms. Tillman. Commissioner Rogers looking to see you every single day this week.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I don't get to see you. Good afternoon, Sherhington and board. For the record, my name is Latricia. And I'm your Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer. It's a pleasure to be here today with you to talk about the Americans with Disabilities Act. And I'm joined today by Liz Morris. She is our Housing Choice Voucher Program Manager. And she's also a member of our Civil Rights Compliance Committee and serves as lead staff in housing for the Americans Disabilities Act compliance there. In developing the proposed policy and procedure that we're sharing with you today, we wanted to make sure that we aligned and coordinated with departments who are assuring compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act to assure a one Washington County approach. So that's why she's here today. So just for clarity, this policy conversation is not focused on employee-related ADA matters. And that's Title One of the Americans with Disabilities Act. And that function resides in HR and is covered under current personnel policy. So as of the writing of this briefing for you, we have received just through folks checking out the Office of Equity and Inclusion, several client or community complaints since December of this year. And so that those complaints have not been about specific treatment by Washington County employees, but they have been kind of broader systemic complaints. One focused on accessibility for cyclists with disabilities. One about accessible public information. And one about the appropriate accommodation of assistance animals with a service provider outside of Washington County with whom we contract. So.
So there were six complaints with three issues.
Those are just, yeah, some of the themes that are coming up. But what that led to was a realization that we do not currently have a Washington County policy and that's why we're here today. So just for an overview, the ADA was passed and signed into law by President George Herbert Walker Bush on July 26, 1990, after decades of organizing and struggle by people with disabilities who began to challenge societal barriers that excluded them from their communities. And also when parents of children with disabilities began to fight against the exclusion and segregation of their children. What the ADA recognizes is that it's not enough to remove policy barriers. It's also imperative to mandate affirmative conduct to remove architectural and communication barriers and to provide accommodations for clients and community members. So the ADA requires that public entities, regardless of whether they receive federal funding or not, are subject to Title Two of the ADA, which prohibits discrimination based on disability. The purpose of the Americans with Disabilities Act is to provide a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities and to provide clear, strong and consistent enforceable standards addressing discrimination against individuals with disabilities. So that's the purpose. So the ADA requires that public entities with 50 or more employees, and that includes us, to have at least one responsible employee to coordinate ADA compliance or an ADA coordinator. We can have more than one, but we must have one. And to adopt and publish procedures for resolving grievances arising under Title Two of the ADA. And so we're gonna, before we talk about the proposed policy, we're gonna share a little bit about what's happening within the Housing Department in particular, because there is a very clear mandate that comes from housing and urban development for compliance with the ADA.
Hello. So some of our programs within Washington County and different departments do have to have the requirement for a policy and it has housing. The Department of Housing also serves as the Housing Authority of Washington County and leverages federal dollars to administer the programs. And through this robust, we have a robust ADA policy. We've had to have this in place and so therefore it's given us the ability to review and process reasonable accommodations for people participating on our programs. So in coordination with the American Disabilities Acts, there's a section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 that requires any entity receiving federal financing assistance must ensure that persons with disabilities are not discriminated against or denied access to goods or service that the federal funds provide. So with this, the housing has participants that are receiving subsidy through our voucher programs and with the landlords for some of our participants. So we have the buildings that we are responsible for making sure that we provide that access as well. We receive about 15, 10 to 15 a month in varying requests. Some examples could be households needing extra time to search for a unit, higher payment standards so they can utilize their voucher and a unit that's more accessible that might cost more and so forth. And then in public housing, it could be modifications to the unit, like adding grab bars to making sure there's safety and bathroom access in other places. And there are times where if we are not the landlord, we might be referring people back to their landlord because that would not be something that would fall under our requirements. But we do definitely want to support any inquiries that come in to make sure that we're rooting them into the correct location.
Okay. So this slide highlights our proposed.
Just one second. So I want to make sure that I'm clear in understanding. While we haven't had a comprehensive Washington County policy, we have in the domain of housing at least had a practice. Okay. Am I correct in that word using practice?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, just trying to make sure I agree.
Okay.
Yes. So I think to align with the one Washington County approach, we're trying to kind of pull these threads that are happening within departments and then elevate them into one comprehensive Washington County ADA policy with one point of contact potentially, although no wrong door. But one coordinated, standardized process.
Okay, I'm still on the journey.
Okay, great. Okay, so this is the proposed policy. It was developed with consultations from programs specific to disabilities, including housing and human services. We consulted with facilities, with IT, et cetera. We also consulted with several community stakeholder groups, service providers and disability rights advocates to inform the policy. The Equity Leadership Council internal to Washington County and several of its subcommittees were consulted as well. And then the policy and procedures were open for all staff review. And the draft policy and related procedures that are presented in the attachment reflect the incorporation of that feedback as much as possible. These three points here reflect the primary pillars of the ADA. So the policy would state that Washington County is committed to providing equal access in its program services and activities to people with disabilities, to recognizing our obligations under the ADA to proactively modify policies and procedures when necessary to ensure that people with disabilities are afforded an equal opportunity to participate and to comply with all applicable laws concerning the notification and participation of people with disabilities.
So we anticipate requests coming in and reviewed case by case. There will be a formal way, but requests can come in. As Latricia said, it's a no wrong door. So they might come in different forms and formats and being rooted to the correct location with the intention to give Washington County's commitment to equity and diversity inclusion and removing the barriers for participation feasible for proposed accommodations and its impact, ensuring the essential function of the services that are provided. So Washington County will respond to all requests where possible, engaging in the interactive process. As the requests come in, sometimes there might need to have a medical verification depending on to see if there's a nexus. That's what we have to do in housing, as an example. We have to see if there's a verified nexus between the requests and the disability. Engaging in the interactive process helps to ensure that there's an understanding as well. So somebody may request X and it's actually Y and Z might work as well. And so having that conversation instead of just reviewing it in the written word. A specific program accommodation request will be routed to the appropriate departments and reviews and response. So if something comes in that was actually a voucher participant, the office, the reviewer would just route that to the appropriate department to make sure that we're able to do this. And coordinating with the policies and looking at, in housing, we receive and track, respond and refer as needed. And the goal of this is also to track the metrics so we're able to ensure that we're doing analytics to help us check unconscious bias when reviewing the types of requests and the outcomes compared to the demographics. And so I believe that is also a part of the goal that we have here is to make sure we have a formal tracking system too.
Are we asking, are we waiting to the end to ask questions? I mean, I'm happy to wait to the end.
Um, two more slides. And then we have a question specific to the policy. Okay, so let's move on. So again, in the proposed policy, it would be clear that the cost of an approved reasonable accommodation or modification would be borne by Washington County, its grantees or contractors, not the applicant or the participant. And individual clients and community members may grieve an alleged ADA violation as provided in the procedure, which is attached. And we'll just talk a little bit about that. And then the ADA coordinator for Washington County would be designated as the Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer or they're designated within the Office of Equity, Inclusion and Community Engagement. So for that single point of contact. And just want to talk a little bit about applicability. So the policy would apply to all county managed physical facilities, public rights of way services, programs and activities provided by Washington County as well as our grantees and contractors of Washington County. We have a responsibility to assure not only that our staff are compliant with the county policy and procedure, but also those who are delivering services on behalf of the county. We also include in the proposed policy definitions such as covered entity, individuals with a disability, reasonable accommodations or modification or undue financial or administrative burden. So questions specific to those definitions are located within the policy itself. So that's the highlight of the proposed policy. So now we can pause for questions.
Why don't we start with you? Since I already interrupted once, thank you very much. The, on page seven, and I believe that you may have explained this and I think I was thinking about the question and not listening to the answer. I apologize for that. Under the, the first bullet, or request for accommodations will be reviewed on a case by case basis with attention to, and the first bullet is our commitment to equity, diversity and inclusion. Does that mean that there'll be a prioritization of the individuals based on the, on what criteria here? I'm confused a little bit about.
Yeah, the reason why we put both in there is, one, the commitment is reflective of the board's equity resolution of 2020. And the second dot point is the compliance language. And so what we wanted to recognize is that this is not just about meeting the minimum standard of compliance with the federal law, but it also meets a higher standard, which is the board's adoption of the equity resolution. So it doesn't mean prioritization. It mostly means that when we're thinking about feasibility of an accommodation, we're not just thinking about what's the minimum possible to meet compliance, a compliance standard.
Okay, I can, can you step back for one second? I see that for this topic, there are multiple documents, but none of them have a page number of seven.
Slide seven.
Oh, slide seven. Oh, now I'm with you. Got it. Got it, got it. Okay, sorry.
And I, the reason that I'm bringing this up is that my first reaction was it sounded like criteria. And I wasn't sure if, you know, pressing needs for people would be balanced against their, their BIPOC status or whatever. And that's, I'm just pointing out that that's the way I, you know, that was a question I raised. So I don't know if we need to address that. Maybe I'm the only one that saw it that way. But it, it, it just made me concerned a bit.
That was not the intent.
I, and I, and I don't doubt that one.
So hold that thought for a second. So assuming that we have to, we as the board have to take an action to adopt the policy, but I may be wrong. Okay, we do. So I went and read the administrative policy document. And then I figured, well, I wrote down questions that I have, and then I tried to distinguish, well, I don't know if we vote on procedure, but I've read the procedures anyway because the procedures are meant to say how you're going to meet the policy. And I don't know if any of what I'm about to say for my questions touches upon yours. So I looked at the administrative policy 211, and I might have done all of this backwards. PDF page 58. Uh PDF page fifty eight. Oh, well. The packet changed since Sunday, so. Nope, I'm still on that packet. Anyway, on page two, there was according to my notes. Yeah, there's definition.
Eleven, there's, there's two eleven A and B.
Two eleven is the policy, A and B are the implementing procedures.
Yes, yes.
So you're on the policy.
My first question is on the policy, yes, I think.
And, and just for clarity, the board would vote to adopt the policy, the procedures are administrative.
Yeah, that's what I figured, but I'm really just trying to understand how all this works. So um yeah, so I'm on administrative policy. Yep, I'm making sure I'm doing, following my own notes. I'm on page two under definitions. So, so I read these definitions and what I'm trying to figure out is. There's an element of this that gets to physicality for me. Like physical access to the counters in different offices. And the fact that there, so the counters I'm most aware of. A and T over here, HHS down the hall on the second floor. Where we have a bunch of HR and finance. And then third floor, there's both the LUT, there's the board and there's. General counsel. And that's just this building. So um I think about, there are different kinds of disabilities. There's sight, there's hearing, there's uh intellectual disabilities. There are physical diff- disabilities and they each have a lot of variety. Well, um I find that there are parts of our building. Difficult for me as an able-bodied person to access. And so um it's hard for someone who is physically challenged. To physically get into the building. But once they do, it's still physically very difficult to get to through our double doors. Will this policy make us fix that?
It's a good question. So um also at the top, under the authority for the policy, there's a reference to the twenty twenty, twenty ten ADA standards for accessible design. And so one of the entities that we did consult with in the creation of the policy was um the facilities team. And actually, uh John Williams in facilities has really been one of the leaders in. Uh doing the self-assessment of Washington County facilities. So yes, that, this adoption of this policy helps to reinforce the work that facilities has been doing. In terms of their facilities assessment, I believe it will be built into the capital improvement plan document, et cetera. So.
Well, I hope it will get better because the day I walked into this building as county chair. I mean, I threw my shoulder out over the double doors up to our office, so. I just want it to get better.
Yeah. And may I, I'm.
Go ahead.
May I address it? That's also why we want to track all of the requests that come in so we can see where, meet people where they're at. So knowing that there are improvements that we may see, but we know that there's so many, as you mentioned, so many different.
Okay.
Things that we may not realize and that if we can see that there is this one, is it one action or is it a common thread? And so that kind of does help us with our improvements that we're able to make across the board.
Yeah, and I think I'm not alone in the experience that I find people all the time trying to figure out our wayfinding.
Exactly, exactly. That's sort of, okay, part of it.
Okay, uh, thank you. I'm, I am very hopeful. So that takes care.
Can I just add on to that?
Sorry.
And I would refer back into the policy, the undue financial burden. So there are um areas of improvement we can make in building design. And so the collecting of the data helps us get smarter and better as we build new facilities. And so right now, we only have, well, it's a decentralized process and we're not collecting the data centrally. So this will just help us continue to be better data-informed um decision-making processes moving forward, not only on the CIP. Also just with general operations.
Yeah, I think about those, those counters that have the highest usage. I mean, we all get to see the lines with A and T, right? And those doors, HHS gets a lot, elections gets a lot. You know, so highest, highest access is a great place to start. So that took care of. Uh my first question, I think it related to the admin policy. Two one one dash A under access page two, number five. Then my last thing was uh on the admin procedures, on the grievance procedure. Uh page two, number four, response. So I'm just wondering, I'm trying to respect the process. Whoops. That um. Trying to. Go back to, I have to make it bigger. So page two, number four. I am not an all-electronic person, just on these little monitors. I'm not as efficient as on my big screen in my office.
Oh, a different document that's in our packet.
Well, that's the problem. I downloaded the packet Sunday and read it. And it changed yesterday. And I'm done with all the updates. So I am on of the, is it page nineteen of the uh? I am on the PDF procedure two one one B titled administrative procedure. Okay, so it says section two hundred, general administration in the table, procedure two one one B. And there's page one, there's page numbers in there, so I'm on page two, number four. Or the Sunday version. So it talks about uh within fifteen days after receipt of the grievance. To discuss the grievance. So the. There's the single point of contact, right? The coordinator or designee. And then if the person wants to file a grievance, they can with that ADA office or designee. And um then they can, I thought, yeah, then under number five. They can submit an appeal that goes to the county administrator. So what I was trying to come to is, we talk about the, this whole policy and procedure. Talks about how the coordinator will work with the departments. So that I'm, once again, thinking about the person who. Puts in the complaint. So. I'm painting a bad experience, okay? So they get sent to a department, people go on vacation, people change jobs. So they may get shuttled to another person in, within a department, right? So I'm assuming that the department has a responsibility to get back to the coordinator or designee. Okay, so um. What I just, I mean, the ADA coordinator or designee has the opportunity to. Go on vacation, go on leave, be a busy person because we expect, yep. And so what I want to make sure is that occasionally we get constituent input. About uh uh not liking the fact that it takes time. And so I'm wondering, how do we make sure that there's enough visibility in place? So that the ADA coordinator and designator in working with the departments are. That things are happening and getting back to the. Complaintant, the individual who has filed the complaint within a timely manner. So I haven't figured out how that works. So sorry to be so long-winded, but that's what I haven't figured out.
Um, that's a good question. And it wa- and for housing, that's what we built in with our process. So as the intake, as they come in, um the team members uh input that into a smart sheet that tells me the date that it receives. So then I get a ping, an email, so it triggers that. And then I know my time is ticking.
Yeah.
Um so then I put in whether it was needed more time and contacted them. And so that, and and that's part of the data we're able to see, like, why, why did this one take longer? So that we know right away when we're reaching out to somebody, if it's this type of request, it might take longer. We have certain requests that we, we just cannot approve. We have to maybe submit to HUD and, and that's going to take even more time, like you said.
So as we get back to the individual.
We do.
Okay.
It's a loop and sometimes it's a quick response because the answer is we're able to move forward and approve. Or sometimes it's, we received your request, we're going to need a little bit more time, but we're going to engage you in that process.
Okay. Given that this is a new policy and it's the first time I've tried to better understand the procedures. It for this kind of policy, I appreciate your patience in my trying to figure out how all the pieces work together.
This is why we appreciate Liz Morris for actually talking about how it looks in one department. So that we can build out that system countywide. We had conversations with I T about building out uh some sort of a data tracking system. Um but in the absence of a policy, we're not able to do that because of all the considerations of client confidentiality. So we need your action on the policy so then we can get moving on the actual implementation infrastructure. So that we can move forward with the procedures.
One last question um that I think comes up with ADA, though I think it's still new science. I heard a piece on National Public Radio about with site limited people. How new research is showing that the Arial font is more comfortable. Uh with site-challenged folks. And so I just wanted to share that as we produce a lot of electronic material. And uh we may want to look at something like that. Thank you. Other members? Commissioner Teresa, I don't know if I touched on anything that you were talking about with the.
No, but I think I've had my question answered.
Okay, great, okay. Commissioner, Commissioner Willie.
Yeah, I'm um, I'm a little confused as to. Is this? For Washington County or is it for? Us and external. So does this apply to both? Because you state that we've had some complaints and um. So I'm reading this and I haven't read the entire document yet because I just read the slide presentation, but um. Guess I don't, I, I'm wondering if this puts us into a situation where we're going to be looked to, to be resolving. All the disputes in Washington County uh with people who think we're they or somebody else's violating an ADA. Policy, qualification, whatever the case is. So that puts us in the judge and jury position.
So let me try and address that and then I'll turn it over to Tom Carr, maybe you can weigh in as well. My understanding is that um this does not apply to um Washington County businesses. Who are just operating in Washington County. Um but it does apply to our jurisdiction of Washington County. As well as any entities that we're passing through dollars to. Uh because the mandate for this is the recip- being a receiver of federal dollars. Either a recipient, a sub-recipient or a contractor of a sub-recipient. And so we're following the federal dollar. And so we also have to hold our contractors in the same um compliance that we hold ourselves in. And Tom, if I've misspoken.
This someone used the word jurisdiction. I think what she meant was that our own facilities. So if it's, if it's something we control, obviously it applies. Also, if somebody we fund, all of our contracts have a provision that requires people not to discriminate and to comply with all laws. So this would be, we'd be using that as the basis for this to, to make our contractors comply.
It, it still would be a pretty broad net. I mean, because um vendors, anybody that's on our vendor list, anybody that's on our procurement list. So it's, it's still a pretty broad net that we're tossing out there. And so we're going to field, somebody walks into somebody else's place and they don't like something or it's not ADA compliant or something like that. They complain to us, we have to go resolve that.
Yeah, that's, that's the law. And the federal law does require us, since we're a federal recipient to uh and we pass dollars on to, to make sure that people are complying with the ADA. I mean, the change may be the difference in philosophy, but the, they're still, they're, they're already required to apply with, comply with the ADA. Uh we're just going to provide a better facility to accommodate those in the community.
And we haven't had to do that up to now because we didn't have a policy?
No, we had to.
Yeah, we should have been doing.
We're just being very um coordinated about it now with clear policy and. Administrative procedures in place.
So what, what does it mean, request for accommodation? What does that mean?
Over, in the sense of housing or just in, in?
I'm using your terminology.
Okay, thank you. Uh so it's accommodation um is a alteration to either the way that somebody's participating on a program or an accommodation to. It could be a, this is the example I gave, which was a modification. So it's accommodating. So a request for accommodation is just the, it's the terminology for them to implement that I have some, I have a need, I need something that is different. I'm not able to access something that way. So it is our terminology that we utilize as a visiting accommodation request. So there's like a form and process. So it's more for the process piece. And that we are making a modification or accommodation to a policy or procedure to serve somebody uh with equality access or equal access.
So what if um this applies to fifty and over, which is us, but what if, so you get a, a small business that. Wants to have training so that they're in compliance, but they can't really, they don't know where to go or maybe they can't afford it. Do we provide that training?
We would probably provide the resources because there are, that's the ability that we would be able to do as part of our procedure is reviewing these. Sometimes it is referring people to access programs that are already available. So if somebody, if we do not have a formal training, and I'll let, let Teresa speak a little bit more to this. But like for housing, we have a list of, of, this is some resources that may work for what your requests are. We hear your requests, we get it, it's, we want to inform you instead of saying it's not ours. We want to make sure we can hopefully guide them in the right, right path.
Yeah, we're actually in the process right now of hiring a, a civil rights trainer, which would be deployed to train our employees. But also eventually be able to um offer training more broadly to the people that we do business. And there are many training resources already that are available publicly, online, free of charge.
But I, but we're not accountable for a small business within Washington County and the way that they operate.
If they're, if they're one of our vendors, yeah.
If they're a vendor, yes, but I, I'm just, I'm just trying to see if I understand his question.
If there's no relationship with Washington County, the government through a funding mechanism, then no. So we're not in charge of every entity's ADA compliance. We are in charge of our ADA compliance, the entities that we fund become agents of the county. We are responsible for their compliance.
And when we are executing contracts with our vendors, this is part of the contract. So, so I'm just pointing out that it's not, it's not this watershed of new things.
But I am looking at fairly significant responsibility that we are taking on. Or it's, as, yeah, we should have been doing, but we're not, but now we are. Now we have a formal policy of doing this. I'm just saying it's an eyes wide open thing um for, especially if we've gotten. Six complaints in the last. four months, uh if my dates are right.
Or would you like to comment on that statement of it's been our responsibility, but we're not?
Well, it's the law.
Yeah, it's nothing new. It's just we're formalizing it. That's all I'm saying. Yeah. So one other question that I, and then I'll shut up and do this another time. Um, going back to your paragraph four, where we have fifteen days to re- to respond and twenty-one days.
Oh, boy. I now have an administrative procedure that's mine. I did mention it, yes. I'm just teasing you.
No, I'm trying to figure out who's, how'd you get it administrative responsibility?
Hers.
Oh. What you were talking.
Yeah.
Just mute their mics for a little bit here and we can say, have this.
Hey, them.
Sorry.
The timing of that seems rather short.
See what happens.
Fifteen days to respond and twenty-one days to explain Washington County's conclusion regarding grievance allegations and if appropriate suggest. That's pretty fast, isn't it? Is that part of the civil rights? Is this part of the federal verbiage or is this us?
I, we based it off of the standards that exist already in the housing department.
Which is based off of HUD's recommendation.
But we have flexibility.
Uh, in a sense, but we want to discretion our application to make sure we're informing, which the fifteen days to respond is very similar to, it could be responsive. We need more time. So it's the fifteen days could be in a complete action. Um.
Fifteen days is three business weeks.
It's three weeks and this is about people's ability to receive a service.
Calendar days. Calendar days.
The calendar. Okay, we can, we can change that. But we, we don't want to take fifteen days calendar or business to respond if somebody needs a document in Braille. Right? If somebody's trying to engage in a conversation and they need a sign language interpreter, we don't want to take that long to respond. So if for whatever reason, they have requested an accommodation and a department has said, we can't do that. And they disagree. And so now they're taking it to the next level. Remember that the genesis of the request is that the person has a disability and they want to engage with the county services. So.
I don't have a problem with fifteen days.
Right. And I.
I have a problem with the twenty-one days.
The twenty-one days is on the.
Six days. Let's say we, we notify them on the fifteenth day. We have six days to respond, shall explain Washington County's conclusions regarding the grievance allegations and if appropriate, select suggest options for resolving the grievance.
It will be twenty-one business days following the discussion, the contact. So it's a calendar. Sets again.
I'm just trying to find. I just think this has potential problems and um certainly burden on our staff. And I'm trying to find as much flex in this as we can give it, not trying to dodge the bullet, but trying to provide us opportunity to do what it is that we're being asked to do. And that is if we have to go fact finding, if we have to go uh do some research, uh then we allow ourselves some time to do that. And I don't feel like this gives us that.
This is specific to a request for an accommodation. It is not a, um, so if an accommodation is denied, then they grieve the accommodation.
So then what?
So there's not fact finding. It's not.
Would be like, God forbid, I become disabled, disabled and need a wheelchair. The county needs to provide access for me to wheel in, right?
Right. Which could mean.
That's an accommodation. I would need.
Chair mentioned, it may mean something to do with the door. It may be signage saying our wheelchair accessible doors are on that end of the building and that end of the building.
So you would accommodate.
Might not be, you ask, can you replace these doors? We might not be able to replace those doors, but we can tell you where the um wheelchair accessible doors are. So that's the.
And if my cue isn't that way, oriented that way, the example the chair gave that like you can't wheel through, it's too narrow or whatnot, then their requests would be expedited because the employee needs to work.
And we have a separate policy for employees. So this is specific to clients and community.
Okay, so uh, but I was also curious um in terms of you. If I understood Commissioner Willie correctly, there was potential concerns about what this might require burden was the word you used. Um, didn't I read at some point sort of the standard template that this policy will be re- re-reviewed in three years? So that's an opportunity to, to say, oh, in three years, what is the data tell us about how this is working? And I rely upon our C A O in the review of all of the different policies in that standard timeframe to ask that question of how is this working? Do we need to make adjustments or not?
There's, there's that avenue and when the when there's a request for a modification, part of the program's deliberation is, is this overly costly? Can we accommodate the both costly in terms of finance or does it change the nature of the program? Right. So if our program was a sailing program and somebody said, I, I need an accommodation, but I need the sailing program to be on land. That changes the nature of the program. We can't accommodate that request.
Yeah.
Right. So that's, there's, there's these uh points of consideration that programs have the latitude to make. Is it overly costly or does it change the nature of the program? And if both of those are true or one or the other is true, then they can deny the accommodation. Ideally, that happens in an interactive process. So we say, we can't do this, but we can offer this, this, and this. Will that work? That's part of that um interactive process.
Commissioner Willie, as far as the timing, what we've also heard from staff is an appreciation of setting out within the procedures, what this timing is. So there's a clarity of responsibility for departments and employees. Having that um, that process in the procedure does allow us to change at such point that it um, we're not meeting the timelines internally, but really asking the question, why aren't we meeting the timelines internally? Um, and, and continuing to uphold ADA as the law. And making sure the administrative procedures do work for Washington County. Having the one Washington County, I'll say spreadsheet or database will help us look across the whole county to do better analysis in that work. I will say um, uh, using housing as the example and working within these timelines and knowing that many accommodations are actually um housing potential units. That includes, that's a facility. I feel fairly confident um in the procedures and I would never say one hundred percent confident because we haven't done this um org-wide. And so we will be continuing to look uh, look at this and this does uphold the law.
Yeah, I wasn't obviously trying to figure out how we can circumvent.
I didn't, I'm not hearing that. I'm just saying from a staff perspective. Yes.
Are there any other board questions?
Yeah, I, go ahead.
I'm gonna make comment, but I want you to go ahead.
Okay. Are you sure?
Up, absolutely.
Um, my computer went away. Um, I had, this is great. I, I appreciate all the work you all have put in. This has been long coming. It sounds like from eighteen fifty-nine since the founding of this county. Um, so this is great work. Um, and I had a question. I think Commissioner Willie, your question that you were asking, like who this applies to, uh, I was thinking the same thing. And if we could go back to that question, and I appreciate uh, uh, Tom's uh clarification around jurisdictions. So I want, I think we need to clarify like where cities fall into this. And then also I, I was wondering if you could clarify about the funding piece. I've heard federal funding, people who get federal funding from us versus Washington County general funds. Or tax, like I think we need to figure out like communities who apply a grant from us. And, and that little process since this applies to the larger Washington County. So I, and then the other uh question I was wondering um was around uh, I think the chair mentioned that the last piece. Um, this is coming back every, or not coming back, but every three years this policy will be reviewed. I think the language is this policy shall be reviewed by the Office of Equity, Inclusion and Community Engagement at least every three years or more often if needed and updated as necessary. Where does the board fit in in this approval of this update? So I was just wondering about that piece. Um, other than that, I think this is really, this will empower people to um, you know, voice their concerns and complaints. And, and I, I, I appreciate you mentioning that there is a separate policy for employees. That way, you know, we're not we're coordinating, as the chair was saying, that there's some kind of, there's a rule in place. It's just, we just didn't have a policy. And I also wondered, you know, you, you, your, your um research uh focused a lot on housing. Uh, but there's also a transportation um piece on this. And I was wondering if you had a conversation or if your research expanded beyond housing. I think housing is a great example. And it's something that we can really put our finger to and something that most people can relate and understand, especially when you mention landlords. And, but I'm wondering uh what other um, the scope of your research, what other topics or, or function areas did you include within the county service?
Can we start with slide three and the first question?
Got the questions, but figured your.
I got, I got them all.
Yeah.
Got them all. Um, so your first question was about coordination with cities. It's a great question. Um, cities are also, they also have to comply with the ADA.
Right.
Um, we do pass funding on to cities. And so by virtue of that, they are also responsible for compliance, right? Um, if they weren't already responsible for ADA compliance, which they already are. Um, federal funding obligates the entire organization. So if one part of the organization receives federal funding and another part of the organization does not, the whole organization is still required to comply with ADA. So the grants that we give, if we're granting with general fund, we are an ADA required compliant organization. So that requirement applies to that grant as well, regardless of the funding source.
Okay, so, okay, then I think it's important. We don't say federal funds then, because I was understanding as.
It's the federal funding that obligates us and
Apply.
Um, to your point, um, there is also Oregon revised statute that also obligates us to comply. So it's actually federal and state funding that hold, that creates that compliance requirement. But by you adopting this policy, you are also now saying the county is adopting this as policy as well.
Okay.
Okay, so then the policy review, I don't know if you want to speak to this. This is part of the policymaking update process. So um, we're trying to identify who's responsible, who's the originating body, who's responsible for updating the policy every three years. I would imagine if there's substantive change, not just tweaks, it would come back to the board or if the policy needs to be rescinded. Um, then we would come back to the board. And then who did we talk to beyond the wonderful housing department? We had conversations with facilities, with land use and transportation, with health and human services. Um, so a number of entities.
Yeah, county council, of course.
Forget him. So uh, yeah, so we did um land use and transportation. They are also um beholden to those um accessibility guidelines from a um facility. So they're looking at it like curb cuts, sidewalks, bike and the bicycle um issue was something that we had a lot of coordination with land use and transportation on.
Sure, Horton, one last question. Where's the, I'm trying to like, I think, I hear you. I've been trying to figure out how the, all the, all these pieces fit in. Um, and the idea of one Washington County and um, in this policy, uh, public safety and justice in the sheriff's office and the DA's office, where is this all uh aligned?
Yeah, so um, things like if some, again, an accommodation modification, if somebody needs sign language interpretation in the court, in sign language interpretation in booking, if they need something large font, if they need Braille, like all of this would be in the implementation. Again, we're asking you to think very broadly in terms of policy. The procedure is around accommodations in response to community requests. Our role in OEIC would be to provide training to departments around what that might look like department by department.
And my last comment would be like the procedure. I read it and I was um, I, I was reflecting back to when uh L U Ts came here uh around their um process improvement around the permitting process and uh some of that um project improvement they're doing. I was reflecting back some of the dates they're required to comply from permitting processes. So I hope you're giving yourselves, you know, good best practice numbers. And I hear the concern from Commissioner Willie. But I trust you're setting up yourself for success around this um timeline and some of the dates that you're requiring yourself. So I don't, I didn't have any comments for the procedure part, but uh those were my questions. Thank you. I appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My comments are, everyone agrees to the concept of uh, of, you know, to, to treatment of folks with, with disabilities or ADA applications. Nobody's debating the policy. It's the unintended consequences that I think that we need to look at. You're on my term, so you all have to deal with it, but in the real world, there are lots and lots of businesses out there who don't have interpreters. They don't have Braille for their customers. They don't have a number of hearing accommodations. They don't have any of that. And so what you're going to have is you're going to have by sheer inference of saying, I do business with the county. They're going to make a, an economic decision. And I know from my own small practice, I know people are doing that now with any government. They're saying it's not a thing that we're going to do because we can't price it right. So we're going to just understand what we're going to do is we're going to have a pricing differential where small business no longer got to business with government unless they can either raise the prices well above what they normally would charge. Okay, or they just drop out of that market. So just a caution. The other quick little points is that we really don't know what this is going to cost. Cause we don't know what reasonable accommodation is. I, you've done a really good job of trying to explain it, but reasonable to me, reasonable to you, reasonable to somebody else is very different. So you're going to have some adjudication of these issues. And uh, I, I don't know what this means. This county already is in tough budgetary times. This, this could be a lot of money when you start looking at every facility, every action we take. And I think Jerry said, or somebody, maybe it was Pam, that it was significant, significant issues in regard to everything, every one of our senses. Or I think, yeah, maybe Catherine said it too, in regard to, you know, mental, intellectual understanding of everything from I, here, here's my form to fill out and they said, I can't read it. You're going to accommodate me. So this has some huge, huge implications. What can you do about it? Maybe not much if you're going to take federal funds. But, and that's where the federal funding comes in, has very little to do with anything else, but I, I'm concerned about downstream implications. Not that you won't all be fair, not that everyone won't try to interpret. Not that whoever the attorney is at that time, because this guy's going to be rolling someplace in Europe or doing whatever he's going to be doing out there. Uh, it's, it's going to come back and there's going to be costs. You need to understand those. Government does a good job. And I'll say this, government does a really good job of paying attention to what needs to be done. Sometimes they don't understand what the downstream consequences, that's my opinion of it. And then, then we start to say, what, how do we correct? I mean, this is where we're at, so. I'll stop.
I'll just say that I think um, housing is a great example of how the costs have been able to be absorbed and worked into the normal cost of business standards. I think for all of us who are aging, a grab bar. I think for all of us who are aging, a grab bar, right? It's not like it's, it might not be handrails, curb cuts, right? Like those are not, they're not small investments, but they benefit everybody.
I was just going to say that this is the law. We've been operating underneath this law. We are just, I believe that the purpose for this policy is to find the best way to continue to operate underneath the law in an effective manner for, for our organization. That's.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
So, but I, and I thank you for bringing the policy forward. And I thank you, Liz, for, for providing the template and the background information so that we have something.
So just to close, I know we're well over time. Do you have, does your board have what you need to adopt? So we need to bring this back for adoption.
When's that going to come back?
When it gets scheduled.
Probably May twenty-third or later.
I would advocate for later.
Why?
Because I want to look at this a little bit more closely.
Okay, but if you have needs for any change, it needs to come back on the agenda.
In work session?
In work session.
Oh, okay. That's fine.
Okay.
I heard two changes, minor ones.
You did?
Well.
Calendar.
No, those are procedure.
Yeah, and the, oh, that's in the procedure. Sorry, that's not you.
No policy changes.
Apologize.
And you heard it from one person asking a question, so.
I, I heard it from Ms. Tillman.
Oh. Was supposed to be a calendar.
We will change it in the procedure, but the policy will come back for adoption.
And the question around like when the updates, Tom, your answer was following existing procedure to come back to the board.
We are.
Every one of our policies has that statement in it.
Yeah. So what I, I think Ms. Till.
I asked a question.
Was referring to is we are, we have a work group working on the policy on policies to reorganize how we're doing it, not part of that. And one of the things that we have not done a very good job of is reviewing all the policies in a timely manner. So we're trying to build in a responsibility structure to make sure that that happens for all policies. That's why Ms. Tillman referred to me, because I'm part of that work group who's drafting, we're, we're trying to redraft the policy on policies, policy one hundred.
We need to have a policy on the policies for policies.
That's not its official name.
We are looking forward to that work from you, Tom.
It's actually, Tom is part of the group. It's actually coming underneath my guidance as county administrator. As I'm responsible for all those policies. Yes.
Thank you very much. I would suggest that we take a fifteen minute break and reconvene at three ten.
Good idea.
Thank you. Love it. And then we'll follow up.
Yes.
Remaining topic of the day.
I kind of have a not a hard stop, but would like to finish sixty minutes after we start.
That would be nice, wouldn't it?
I don't know.
So if I'll shut up, maybe that was it.
Perhaps, perhaps, maybe, maybe. You and some other people.
Okay, welcome back from our short break. We're live?
Yep.
We are live. We're going to finish up with our remaining topic of the agenda. Community Participation Organization Program and Committee for Community Involvement Update. Welcome.
Welcome back.
Again, you can't get rid of me.
Don't want to.
Air Harrington and board. My name is Latricia Tillman and I am your Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer. I'm joined today by Amanda Garcia Snell, our Community Engagement Manager. So before we jump in to the actual subject matter of today, just as a reminder, uh, community engagement can and does take a variety of forms. And this slide illustrates just some of those ways. Our conversation today on community participation organization and the community committee for community involvement are just one of the many ways in which and the Community Committee for Community Involvement are just one of the many ways in which uh, community can engage with the county and impact decisions that affect them and their communities, including town halls, boards and commissions, informal work groups, civic leadership training and multiple other avenues. Um, so this is just a reflection of all the avenues for community engagement and a reminder that our community engagement team is working very hard on multiple fronts to help to open pathways for equitable community engagement in Washington County. Okay, so um, today we are revisiting a proposed direction that the board supported in December of 2021, feels like forever ago. And so much has changed since then, so we're coming back uh, at your invitation to refresh the conversation and seek your direction based on where the county is today in terms of community participation organizations and the Committee for Community Involvement. We're happy to take away and we're happy to answer questions we can or take away questions that you have, recognizing that you might need more uh, information and discussion before landing on a direction to get to us. Uh, but what we're gonna do is talk about a brief history of um, committee for community involvement. It does not roll off the tongue. Um, and our community participation organizations, talk about current state, future focus, and then the policy question is, um, is the board supporting um, O E I's, O E I C E's proposed changes to the initial C P O re-envisioning recommendations? Okay, so history and current state. So we do not use the word citizen here in Washington County, but it is in um, goal one, which we will talk about. So I just wanted to spend a little bit of time, if you'll indulge me, to talk about um, the many ways that that term is just fraught. Um, so government, our role is to serve everyone. Um, and through the equity resolution, you all recognize that we need to do better at serving those who have been historically marginalized, regardless of where they are on any societal spectrum, whether they're visiting or just passing through, whether they come here to work or whether they live here. The language is historical and our current R and O reflects that historical language. But the term citizen is problematic in many ways. Um, one is, um, while white women born in America were considered citizens, they weren't granted the right of full citizenship until the 19th Amendment passed in 1920. It, the right to vote was not extended to Native American women until 1924. Immigrants or refugees who were, um, became citizens until 1952, 1965, and African-American women in 1965 with the Voting Rights Act. The state of Oregon re-ratified the 14th Amendment, which defined African-Americans as equal citizens in 1973, 105 years after rescinding their ratification of the actual 14th Amendment. It also took 90 years for Oregon to ratify the 15th Amendment, which gave uh, African-Americans the right to vote. Washington County is also home to a significant Pacific Islander community. Uh, the countries of the Republic of Palau, the Federated States of Micronesia, the Republic of the Marshall Islands have a unique immigration relationship with the United States. These independent nations have allowed the US military to occupy their land and sea territory in exchange for security and long-term restitution for health and environmental damages due to nuclear testing and ballistic missile exercises that displaced families and damaged their economy. Um, the compact of free association is the agreement that many of these individuals fall under if they come to the United States and it gives them the right to live and work in the United States indefinitely without a visa. So they are not citizens, but they are here um, under the compact of free association. Uh, Washington County is also a home to a significant number of immigrants, asylees and refugees who may be here legally while not holding citizenship. Many in Washington County are legally working, but are not citizens. And many have um, families with multiple immigration statuses within their families and communities. So going forward, um, hopefully this gives a little bit of um, understanding around why we do not use the term citizen, even though it is codified in law and codified in our resolution and order from decades ago. Um, and we recognize that it's a term that carries a lot of baggage and lingering remnants of oppression and inequality. Okay, so um, that uh, sort of takes us back to 1974. Um, when uh, although the language there says D L C D, it should be the L C D or the Land Conservation and Development Commission, who adopted goal one, which the D L C D, the Department of Land Use and Conservation.
Yep.
Land Conservation and Development, sorry, implements. So fine point, but it matters. Um, goal one was adopted. Goal one required, we'll talk a little bit more, but that requires us to have a committee for community involvement. Um, fast forward six years, the county created both the Committee for Community Involvement and the Community Participation Organization Program. And in 1986, the county um, adopted Resolution in Order 8658, which established our current guidelines um, for the C P Os and C C I. So I'm not sure how close that is to our current strategic plan, but it's about the same era of uh, of time. So then fast forward 20 years and the Oregon State University Extension, who used to provide support to the C P Os and C C I transitioned uh, to Washington County. And in 2020, the board adopted the Equity Resolution and created the Office of Equity Inclusion and Community Engagement. And then, as you'll recall, in December 2021, the board approved for initial re-envisioning phases for the Community Participation Organization. And now here we are with updates on those phases. So just to provide a high level um, understanding of the requirements established for the Committee for Community Involvement, 1974, Department of Land Conservation and Development um, implements statewide land use planning goal number one, which asks for what we are calling a Committee for Community Involvement to be broadly representative of geographic areas and interests related to land use and land use decisions. Committee members shall be selected by an open, well-publicized public process. It's important to note here that goal one does not require community participation organizations. Uh, 1986, County Resolution in Order, um, the purpose of that designated the Committee for Community Involvement to serve as the officially recognized Community Participation Resource Committee, representing of geographic area interests. And we um, note that there was a bill that was introduced. I'm not sure where it is at this point.
Last I checked, it was introduced, but I haven't diagnosed it.
Okay, so who knows what's gonna happen with that?
Well, if it hasn't got a hearing, it's dead.
It's dead. Um, but the, at least it was introduced um, that would amend statewide planning goals to address equity engagement and engagement with underserved populations and to address climate change.
Can I ask a question? Why would? It seems climate change doesn't fit in that, so why would they wrap climate change in there? Or they're just trying to?
Because it's on a lot of people's brain and wanting community engagement.
And specific to land use, probably.
Yeah. Revisit the SB 10.
Okay, so in terms of C P O requirements, as I mentioned, um, goal one requires the Community Involvement Program, not C P Os. The R and O established C P Os tied to O S U extension. The C P O program is not limited to land use planning and in many instances, specific C P Os like to focus on other areas of neighborhood interest and concern such as housing homelessness or emergency preparedness, et cetera. Um, the C P O is funded currently by lottery dollars. Um, and um, if we do open up the R and O, um, that would open us to change sort of what's included in our goal or vision for C P Os.
So now I'll transition to talk in more detail about the C P Os and their activity status, uh, participation levels and the support we provide. This map uh, is a breakdown of the 17 C P O boundaries overlaid with uh, your commissioner districts as of December of 2022. The smaller map on the right shows a blow up of the area where all of the districts meet, just so you can see a little bit uh, in uh, clearer detail. As you can see, the C P O boundaries are not aligned with commissioner districts and this continues to be a source of confusion for uh, community.
Old net, right? Sorry.
No, that's the new one.
Yep, it uses the new district boundaries.
Of course.
Yeah.
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 So um, this graph shows an average annual attendance across all C P Os that are meeting, that have been meeting in those respective years. So of those 17 boundary areas, not all C P Os meet. Some have, um, I don't know that they've ever met. There, I can't find any evidence that some of them have ever met. And as you can see, the meeting participation has slightly increased over the last couple of years, despite there being fewer C P O meetings, um, which you'll see in more detail in the next slide. But overall, the participation tops out at about 107 um, people a year. We don't um, we, I don't, I don't know that those are 107 unique individuals. They don't include staff in those numbers, but sometimes, you know, the same people attend different C P O meetings. Um, that's pretty low when you think about the population of the county. And you'll see in a few slides that in addition to being low, it's not particularly representative of the county of profits. So this is a um, slightly simplified version of the table that starts on page three of the memo that was in the packet. It shows a variety of things, um, namely the C P Os that are primarily in each district. The activity status of each C P O. Uh, I've also included the meeting attendance as well as subscribers to the C P O email and mailing lists um, that we maintain in relation to the overall district population, just to give you a sense of the reach. Uh, this table shows a, a couple of things. One of them is that the most active C P Os tend to be in unincorporated areas or in rural incorporated areas like Cornelius and Forest Grove. And for simplicity, I combined all of the inactive C P Os into one uh, all of the inactive C P Os across the county into one.
If I could just point out as well that uh, 12C did not become active until I was a Metro Counselor in my second or third term. So it's still pretty recent. Uh, and then 12F, similarly, it's very recent.
Yeah, that's our most recent. I think it became active just before I joined um, this program in 2018.
Yeah.
Or just reactivate about six weeks. I didn't know how long you'd been inactive. I didn't even know about it before that, because that was before me, but yeah, I didn't know about the reactive parts.
Yeah, but um, so it never officially went inactive, but that's more of a semantic issue. But yes, it, it did reconvene and they've met their meeting and have leadership now. So then it, uh, let's see. I think I covered everything. Oh, yeah. So also in, even in the most active C P Os, the participation is um, is still pretty low in relation to the county's estimated population. 600,000, 371 people. Uh, so this data is a couple of years old and I have shared it with you in the past. Um, but it is the most recent and the only data that we have like this. It shows um, it was based in a survey that we conducted in 2021, then late 2020 and 2021 self-report from people from our mailing list and and our um, online uh, C P O reach. So it uh, it shows that the majority of respondents were, are in similar demographic categories. 60 years, 65 years or older, uh, white identified, property owning and college graduate. Uh, homonene uh, folks. And so it doesn't really deflect, reflect the diversity of Washington County, which is in that side um, column. Uh, given the homogeneity of respondents, it's um, possible that the perspective shared by current C P O participants may not fully reflect the perspectives or priorities of the entire community. So this table is, um, shows some programmatic support over time and really uh, it's um, the total budget lottery fund transfer and then the total F T E. And uh, I just started this table in 2017 because that's when the um, coordination of the C P O program transitioned from O S U extension to the county. That first um, fiscal year, 1718, there's an asterix there because in that first year, the C P O budget was also combined with the general community engagement budget. And so um, beginning in F Y 2018, 19, those things were separated out. And so from um, 2018, 19 down, it's ju, you're just looking at the C P O budget total with the lottery fund transfer and then the total F T E.
So with the proposed budget, I thought we had a combined community engagement budget. Okay.
No, it's 356,000 and, and the proposal right now. 107. Sorry, I just haven't remembered that number.
107. Average per month?
Oh, people that participate in C P Os a, across all C P Os. It's an average across the year. So they don't all meet every month.
It is that by the 350, by 100. $3,600 participant account.
3271, so I calculated, but it's 107 into 350,000. It's okay, we can move on, sorry.
I think it's important also to make sure we understand, is all the 350,000 dedicated to the C C I and the C P Os?
Yes.
And it's all spent in the calendar year as well. So I'm just questioning where, you know, where the budget is.
Yes.
Is I thought that there are some resources that went to civic leadership training and those types of things as well.
Yeah, so in 2021, 22, that's when we started, um, we transitioned the funding of the civic leadership program into the C P O budget because of the um, the pathway relationship between.
I'm not arguing why. I'm just pointing out that it's, you can't divide the number of participants in C P Os and come up with a per-participant cost.
Well, we could add in the number of civic leaders.
Right.
It's not gonna change too much the per-participant cost.
Okay, or you could subtract the civic leadership.
Yes, yes.
And I'm, if they end up joining and staying in a C P O, yes.
If you're gonna include them in the dollar calculation, you gotta include them in the participant.
It's a little apple, orange.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway.
But that's why, that's why combining civic leaders and C P Os is apples and oranges in the budget. That's what, that's why I'm bringing it up. Okay. I, and I will go back and look at the budget again. I, I have that A R. Thank you.
So um, for both the C C I and C P O programs, um, O E I C E regularly provides general programmatic support uh, from a senior administrative specialist to program specialist and a program manager. And then direct staff support from three program coordinator positions who are assigned to specific active C P Os and C C I. Here you can see individual positions and staff and amount of F T E dedicated to the C P O. So here are the types of support that staff provide to the C P O leaders. Um, we list this in more detail on the webpage, on the county's webpage. Um, and we phrase it as up to these um, these things, as many C P O leaders do not need or want a lot of support from staff for their meetings. Um, it varies from C P O to C P O. And then here's a screenshot of our recently updated um, C P O webpage to show the way in which it lists the level of support we provide. And then here's a screenshot of our recently updated CPO webpage to show the way in which it lists the level of support we provide. It's no frills, but it does, it does share the key information.
Thank you.
So we recently worked with a consultant to develop service level agreement with CCI to serve as an interim clarifying document until we complete the re-envisioning project. And you can see we provide more administrative support for CCI than we do for CPOs, we take their meeting minutes and things like that. So the CCI and CPOs are volunteer-led, which means that we don't develop the content of their agendas, we don't facilitate their meetings, et cetera. We support them to do that and, and help them get the information they need to do that. CCI and CPO are led by, as you know, passionate and very knowledgeable community members who have made many contributions over the forty years of the program's history and that the program has been active in Washington County and specifically, here's a list of some related, specific to land use and transportation. So I'll pause there for questions, or we move on to the future focus.
Well, the way, I just want to make sure that I'm anchored in the basics, so all of this really came out of the that slide that you had earlier with the history of what, and I appreciated you have it on slide five with the Committee for Citizen Involvement and so forth. So I'm staying anchored on this responsibility of land use and land use decisions as, as I'm on the journey through this material. So I'll just leave it there for the time being. But I'll, I'll be coming back to that.
Any other questions? When we move on to future focus.
I just wanted to add, I think for us in the Office of Equity Inclusion Community Engagement, we are anchored on the equity resolution, and so there are several items within the equity resolution that in, I think our interpretation have given us more concern or question around the structure of the CPO program and CCI. So specifically, it talks about creating an inclusive culture that values and celebrates the diversity of the county's residents and employees. Washington County is committed to dismantling longstanding systems, programs, policies, and practices that may have historically created obstacles to the success of people of color, members of ethnic communities, and any marginalized group. And the Board of Commissioners is taking a systemic, systematic approach to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and will proceed with care and thoughtfulness. So I think for us, even just laying out the history and current state, trying to identify that, that's, I appreciate, like, your anchoring.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to add, like, our anchor is also there and with the equity resolution.
Thing in my brain, so I think it's, it's worthy of just checkpointing here, because your next slides do get into the equity resolution. The history of what we've come through is because of the state land use requirement. The Board of Commissioners chose from nineteen seventy-four to nineteen eighty-six to add in the citizen participation organization, right? So from my standpoint, I think of CPOs as a tactic, okay? Over the course of the forty years, the cities have grown in population and geography, the urban area has grown in population and geography, and particularly the urban unincorporated areas have grown significantly in population and geography. Many of the CPOs that I'm familiar with and what I've heard a lot from folks while I've been chair is there's the land use responsibility, and then there's this phrase used around community building. Well, I've spent a lot of time thinking about that and our portfolio as a county government. And county governments don't tend to do community building, they do for rendering the services as a county government, okay? But that's about it, so that's why I have found this map very useful for me to help lay out for me visually as I think about the, that crown, I call that the crown of community engagement, sorry. That crown of community engagement is different, different jewels, different aspects of it, different bubbles, whatever. I don't have a hard copy of it, otherwise I'd be holding it up. And so that's for me really the rub. I'm, yeah, I'm not, I'm not embracing the totality of community building, right? So I'm really looking at the brass tacks, so as we have committees that ensure we're meeting our land use requirements and purposes for engagement, that's where I apply the equity resolution. Not how do we apply the equity resolution in the entire sphere of people's imagination of what we should do as Washington County government, does that make sense? Thank you. So that's just where I sit at the moment.
Turn for that, maybe you would not, but to me, that's a municipal service, it's not necessarily county-wide service.
The only thing I'd say to that, Roy, is that it's interesting, it is a municipal, I agree, but where we have our most active CPOs are in urban unincorporated here.
Yes, because they don't have anything else.
Exactly, so they don't have the municipal services.
But we're not required.
I, I understand that as well.
We're on the same page there.
Great, thank you. It's a big complicated topic.
It is, certainly is.
Okay, so I'm on. So the question we want to ask you again to consider is the proposed changes to the initial CPO re-envisioning recommendations. And so again, we brought those in twenty, end of twenty twenty-one, got your support in moving forward in that direction, and many things have changed. And so our proposed changes that we're sharing today are reducing the number of CPOs and aligning CPO boundaries with commissioner districts, we have some options. Detaching the re-envisioning process from the county strategic planning timeline, as you'll recall, originally, we had tied the number and alignment of CPOs to your district reapportionment, and we had a tie, tied the re-envisioning process to the county strategic plan, and those timelines now seem to be separating somewhat. And then in phase three, restructuring the Committee for Community Involvement. What has not changed is phase four, upon the completion of those three changes, then we would update the R and O eighty-six fifty-eight to reflect the changes that are made in the first three phases. So this is an open question, we just want to lay out that thinking for you.
So you're laying it out now, but do you want us to answer it now?
Not yet.
Oh, thank you.
Question, that's.
I'm still on the journey.
Yeah, we're trying to create these little transition slides, so now we're shifting to
A long and winding road.
Future focus, okay. So again, bringing forward the equity resolution in order twenty thirty, what we're hoping to do is in an effort to more clearly align the community participation organization program with the commitments of the equity resolution, and we did propose a re-envisioning in December twenty twenty-one, and so these are some of the reasons. There are many reasons in the equity resolutions, these are just three that we're highlighting. Okay, and as a reminder, these were the initial phases, align the CPO boundaries based on reapportionment, align with a strategic plan, do a CPO structure review, and then update the resolution in order.
I have a question. You said detaching the re-envisioning process from the county strategic timeline, and then here I see.
This was the initial proposal, this is way back into twenty twenty-one, so just reminding you what we initially proposed. And then this was the initial timeline that we proposed, right? So we anticipated that we would be talking about CPO boundary options, developing a community engagement plan, oh, this is the new one, this is the new one, oh, okay, so sorry, is that yours?
No, it's still you.
Sorry, okay. So.
No, go ahead, I was going to say this was what we thought we would do a month ago.
This is what we thought we would do a month ago, when we thought we would be moving forward. So again, we are, we are not making this as a statement, like this is where we're going, or this is an update, or this is our plan. We are phrasing this as a question seeking board direction, does this make sense to you? So that would mean that going forward in the next, within the spring, we would explore CPO boundary options, develop a community engagement plan, include the Committee for Community Involvement liaisons in this re-envisioning process, and then implement a community engagement plan. Additionally, we would further explore the option for the Committee for Community Involvement to shift into LUT with, with a CCI liaison. From there, great, from the CCI. So we would be working on this, like, what is the impact of this shift in partnership with land use and transportation? And then have appropriate touchpoints in the CPO boundary community engagement plan. So phase two, which was aligning with the strategic plan, was basically eliminated and absorbed into phase one. So instead of having a community engagement plan as part of the strategic plan, we would do a community engagement plan independent of the county strategic plan, so still community engagement, but it wouldn't be a part of the broader strategic planning effort.
I have a question about, about this particular slide, so it's when, when you, the first bullet is explore the selected CPO boundaries option. And it, when the, the, the use of the word explore, who's, who's exploring, is that involving the community as well?
Yes, and, yeah, and the, the CCI has designated a, they have developed, they have a subcommittee focused on re-envisioning, and they have identified Bruce Bartlett as the liaison to be involved in the conversations. We haven't started those conversations yet, because we, because we didn't come to you all for direction.
Yeah, we're going to set up a purpose, the purpose may have no purpose. There may be no purpose. So, so it just, it feels like the, the boundaries option is separate from re-envisioning, but it's really not.
It would be the first phase, yeah, the first.
If in fact that's what we do. So I have a question. I don't know how far into presenting summer twenty, the next two boxes make sense, at least for me, because you know, the Washington County situation has changed. I, back in, with the passage of Senate Bill Ten, right? And the LCDC actions, those were the days where land use planning was put into practice. Every county had to ensure there were community plans all across their counties. LCDC worked with the state legislature, so the department had funds to help provide grants. And so there was this huge program in the nineteen eighties. You were around Commissioner Rogers to create all those community plans. And then as the UGB was expanded in Washington County, Washington County then had to create other new community plans, all very land use oriented. Well, our situation has changed. The days of Washington County community plan creation are over. Right, there are adopted policies both here and at Metro that further UGB expansion happens with cities, right? So I want, I am acknowledging that we're in a changed situation now. I do think that there is time for a transition. I think we have to make sure that we're successful in at least minimally meeting the state law and the state requirements. And for me, that comes through in the land use and the Committee for Community Involvement. I also acknowledge that COVID has disrupted a lot of things. And we've all been through the funding transition through state and federal funds with that. But we're through the other side of that, right? And in terms of business returning back to normal. I feel strongly that we do need to continue to try to be the best county government that we can within the constraints that we have to be a county government. But that's the point, we're a county government. And so that's where I look at this proposal for re-envisioning, and before you get into timelines, I'm like, so what's the purpose of this program? And from my standpoint, we need to be successful with meeting that purpose on our land use state requirements. And there are a lot of ways to do that. You know, particularly, we're, we're the county, right? When I think about the land use side, and this includes sitting through the presentations from Director Roberts, there's, there are the rural areas that are all outside of cities, the county has, we process permits there, we have rural zoned areas that are in urban reserves, we have county responsibility there. And then for those urban unincorporated areas, all those applications get handled by our staff. So I broke it down in terms of there's land use policy. We work with our planning commission on that, and then it comes to us. There are these land use area plans and community area open houses and engagement that our staff takes care of. And then there are development applications. And staff gets those. There are processes for appeals. And the planning commission gets involved with some as well. And so then there's the appeal process. But so really what it boils down to is we have some existing processes for land use policies. We need to reaffirm what that system works and make sure that our system is following our equity aspirations per the equity resolution. But it's all land use oriented, right? So we can look at the It's all land use oriented, right? So we can look at the structure of the CCI and ask ourselves the question, do we want that reporting to the board? Or do we want it reporting to the planning commission? Those are scales of efficiency. Right, so we can be efficient and effective as a county government. But I think long, oh, long, the days are long gone of. Having other systems for non-land use. Topics. It's a big change. I get that, but. Community building, quality of life issues and community building, we don't do. Outside of our portfolio of county responsibilities. And we have a lot of boards and commissions related to those. And I want us to be successful with those. So. That's, that's my approach to this, is really thinking about it holistically. And that's why I wanted to also bring in some, the visual aids that helped me think holistically. Right? The countywide map, this one. So the one on my wall has the entire county, not just, this has been cropped. I also pull out the Equity Index that Metro keeps giving us, our data bytes and so forth. So. Anyway, land use, land use, land use. That's where I'm coming from. I'm happy to sit and listen to the rest of it.
In, in our thinking, we wanted to acknowledge the, the history connection to land use planning. And also recognize that our Sheriff's Office participates in various CPOs. There's, you know. There are other practices, right, that have become a part, a valued part of the CPO. Relationship to Washington County and, and a vehicle for Washington County engagement with the community. So. You're right, we didn't question that.
Yep. I'm questioning it myself and in my role. Yep, so I'm happy to sit through the rest, but I wanted to be very clear about, we need to make sure. We, as the board. Adopt some purpose. Otherwise, other people are defining it, and it's like, no, no, we are defining the purpose. And I, so I want to see the purpose statement. And I, I agree with you about the fact that we need to own this as the board, and we need to develop the purpose. I'm not sure where I sit frankly at this point around community building. Especially in unincorporated areas, you know, because. Provide a lot of other services in those areas as well. I just need, I. Yeah, and that's why we have. To work through this. Yep, so that's why we have an ESPD Advisory Committee. That's why we have an Urban Road Maintenance District Advisory Committee. That's where I think we need to look at what. And what is the touchpoint with the rest of the community at large? Yep. For those, and I'm not, I, I'm. Yep, there are options. And, and LUT issues would be included in that touchpoint as well for me. I mean, you know, it's the. How we practice it, I think, can look at as well. And I, but I'm, I'm more confused now, not confused. I'm more informed, therefore I have a wider set of options than I had before. So I'm just taking this all in. Yep, I have a question for you, Chair Harrington. Are you saying let's define the purpose of CPOs and CCI's? Or let's get rid of CPOs and CCI's? No, you're, you're going to specific tactics. I'm not. I'm, I'm saying, what is the project purpose? The project, what? You're doing around re-envisioning CPOs? I think titling it CPO re-envisioning is not necessarily correct either. Because all of this goes to what are the purposes that we must meet? And then what are the, what are the optional ones? Now I'm even more confused. So can we define the project here now then? I don't want us to do it verbally. I would prefer that they come back to us. And I, I would support that. Because I'm confused. I don't want something ad hoc.
As I mentioned, we, we did not consider. Redefining the purpose of CPOs. The purpose in the RNO. Talks about CPOs, our large representative group of citizens united by geographic location and organized to work on matters affecting their community.
Yeah, I didn't read the thirty-some odd pages of documentation that was in the packet. They have more to present.
We have more to present. So, so the initial phases would be focused on community engagement. And then developing an implementation plan based on the boundaries. That need to be revised for the CPOs and then. Currently, the Committee for Community Involvement is based on CPO leadership. So we would need to work on that structure to separate if that's what we're gonna do, or like, look at what are the options within that CCI structure? And then move into a process to update the RNO. So again, without questioning the purpose of CPOs, which is already in the RNO.
From nineteen eighty.
From nineteen eighty-six, right, which is basically community engagement geographically based. Our proposal was to consider these options of either. Well, one, aligning CPOs with commissioner districts and then reducing them either to one CPO per district. Two CPOs per district, or three CPOs per district. Three CPOs per district is about equivalent of the number of active CPOs today. So these options would align with commissioner district boundaries. It would level the population numbers in each CPO. Amanda tracks more than the number variation of available population from the smallest CPO to the largest CPO. And it would help create program efficiencies. So that would be phase one.
And the reason that I have problems with the, these options is because. Commissioner districts include cities. And generally, city residents aren't feeling real welcome at CPOs. And the agendas aren't set up to be countywide. So that's why this goes back to. What, what problem are we trying to solve? What's the purpose of this project? Because if it's only to deal with UUAs, then I want to make sure there's no countywide funding.
Right, and again, the purpose right now for CPOs per the RNO is. Organized to work on matters affecting their community. It's not limited to.
From nineteen eighty-six. But I also think you're both, you're talking about the purpose of CPOs, and I think you're talking about the purpose of the project. Yes. So, so I, I think that there might be a difference between what you're talking about. Think you're nipped it and. You're talking about the purpose of this project at the thirty thousand foot level. Looking at today's. I'm just pointing that out. I think you have identified my root cause of my own confusion sitting here too. So thank you.
Yep, but yeah, we're, we only do projects that are relative to our domain today.
So what that leads us to.
So I, I don't have the memo in front of me from December of twenty twenty-one, but I think we talked about the purpose of the re-envisioning.
If it's not in today's packet, I haven't read it. On twenty-one, no.
When we first came to you in December of twenty twenty-one. So I, I linked to it, but I did not include it as one of the.
Yeah, the project was about CPOs.
Well, it was about aligning the CPO program and the, and the funding with the equity resolution. And creating pathways to participation or ensuring pathways to participation that are reflective of. All people in the county, which the current program isn't. So that, that was the initial purpose or interest in, in doing the, in looking at re-envisioning. A lot has changed since then.
Yes, a lot. Yep.
And you know, I, I, I was thinking as, as we were talking about the participation and those things, I was thinking about. The participation in the re-envisioning, or not re-envisioning, in the.
Reapportionment.
Thank you, the reapportionment process. And, you know, I. There's, that was very, what we thought at the time, low as well. So I think that there's a larger issue that needs to be addressed, not, not, you know, just. Looking at these, it's as individual issues, but as, as a larger issue. And I, you know, my experience with CPOs has been when there is an issue within the community of. Residences within that CPO, the, the participation goes up. You know, if we're talking about Thompson curves, if we're talking about. You know, whatever it might be, Cedar Mill, Economic Development.
Or Chevron gas station.
Or Chevron gas station, or whatever, then, then the, the interest level goes up. Yeah. But, but my point is that they, the participation goes up. So it's clear to me. And the way I operate as an individual in my larger community. Is that if there's something that I am particularly interested in or is going to affect me, I'm gonna get engaged. And that's, I think, what, what we've seen over time and currently here. How can we influence that to be a larger group of people and a larger awareness of what their engagement means for them? So I think that there's another root cause here. I will tell you though, I have, I've had, I do monthly coffee and stuff, and I've heard feedback. Is it better? Thank you, sorry. I, I've heard great things about the work you're doing about this re-envisioning. And I think the last time when I was giving my comment was, I don't know what you're doing, but it's working and the community are appreciating and hearing it well. So I, I think, I don't want to boo-boo what you're doing because the community out there is reflecting back. But obviously, there's a disconnect within. My understanding and the, the project and the conversation that we're having, but it is a good conversation. I just wanted you both to know that constituents appreciate, and I think the, one of the comments, and this isn't somebody that's just expressing this to me. There are people there, you know, including our own staff here and Brenda, and. Love, love, love was one of the comments. I love, love, love the re-envisioning process for the CPOs. So I think, taking a step back and maybe perhaps coming back and having that conversation about the project description and the scope. I will tell you, I am a bit biased for CPOs and CCI's myself. As a resident of Aloha, I have benefited as just an individual resident, a mom with kids out, you know, roaming around. There, it was a conduit for a lot of information that was happening, not just from the county land use perspective, but surrounding of it. So people in. People in unincorporated areas benefit, and I, I, I just wanted to be full transparent of where I sit in and the. The values that I benefited and bringing that forward for folks who are continuing to benefit from the CPOs. So whatever you're, and, and the chair's comments about cities, I haven't seen any city, city members come to CPO six. And it's been pretty active long before the, so I think it's something to explore. The slide you talked about around exploring, it's something deeply to explore, because I don't remember seeing. But CPOs have a soft spot for me, and it's actually where I met. When I was just a new homeowner, our sheriff himself, he came and. Really inspiring to just see the sheriff come and actually do the update himself and so, and. So, yeah, I, I think, I, I just wanted, we'll transfer it to here, but I appreciate your work. So if I could make a comment as well, and with all due respect to what you're hearing from your constituents, which I'm, I'm not doubting that, but I will. You can, because they're a witness. I don't doubt what you're saying, but I will tell you that I don't necessarily hear the same thing about the re-envision process. So. Excuse me, that there is concern in my district from, from my constituents about the process. Doesn't mean. Lack of support for. That's right, so. And CCI's, also CCI's have a spot for me, just, just both of them. I think it's a fine line to walk here. And I get the participation, a lack of diversity, you know, people are, but I think it's. We can be intentional about that, but. I like those two entities.
Three thousand two hundred bucks per person. It's not a county, that's. Consolidation makes sense. I always support that. Two, it's a little more complicated. Different three, four, maybe the eastern side of the county, and the reason for this. New, three, goes all the way to Forest Grove and all the way to. So it doesn't really matter, I should say all the way, they'd say it's thankful, like. It goes way out to the large unincorporated area, just four areas got the same thing, so. To try to take votes. And my, this might be a full mountain, that's where I say, we have a lot of common, common with rural residents. Cornelia's and Forest Grove, a bit of a stretch, or even if you go into. Hillsboro, say that they have something in common, so. I, I don't think three for district is the answer. Nine doesn't solve any ROI, probably a couple. But your second question, should they follow geographic down? I don't know what you guys think. I see three and four in rural areas, a little bit, a little different programs, because. You're a farmer, rancher, you have little different ideas. And what it's. Like you have a destiny in an urban area, you just have different.
I guess, if I can speak again without coughing and driving everybody crazy, I apologize. I'm not ready, and I think I'm hearing that from others here, to address your questions. So that's, I'm, I'm not comfortable, I think we're at the, the questions are at the tactical level more. And the issues are above that, are more strategic now. And that doesn't mean that I want to wait for the strategic plan though. So I'm, I'm just putting that, that out there as well. So just because I used that word, I don't want it to be delayed. But I will tell you that. I don't think I'm ready for this yet. Then that's just where I stand. I'm, I'm, I'm talking about addressing the questions that were raised. I'm looking at my computer, I'm sorry, at the proposed changes. Eliminate. Slide twenty-seven. Yeah, I'm right there with you. So in terms of these questions, and Commissioner really will want to hear from you. I think, yeah, what we're talking about just needs to be decoupled from the county strategic plan. But that's one reason why I get down to what, what are we talking about here? What is the purpose, right? What do we have to achieve? And. And we have many, many boards and commissions for different things. And how do we take a look at a role of the CCI and the CPOs compared to our current relevant time? Right? And what, what do we define as the purpose? And we don't have to be all things to all people. And, and look at that. So anyway, I don't mean to keep saying the same thing, using different words over and over again. I'm sorry. Commissioner Willie, what are your thoughts?
Well, I, I have to admit that the CPO program to me has, in my four and a half years, has not been successful, realizing that some of it was during the pandemic, so I give it that. But even pre-pandemic, it was lightly attended. The usual suspects, and I didn't feel like we really had a reach. Twelve F is now reactivated, but as soon as Camp forty seven and Elm Street is resolved, then they're hot, because I sent them a list of topics that they should consider for future meetings. And I don't think I'll ever see those. And I tried to be very expansive as to, you know, get off of this point and let's look big picture.
So
You know, NIMBYism is a powerful force. It's what brings a lot of people to CPOs.
But then soon as it's resolved, then they all go back.
Exactly.
So for me, I have to look at this from the standpoint of, let's either devise a plan where we're going to significantly enhance the value of CPOs or we use the three hundred and fifty thousand lottery dollars differently. And I don't even know, I don't, I don't know if that three hundred and fifty thousand is designated specifically for CPOs or if it's just, that's where we asked for it and that's where it is. I don't know that, but but I'm, I'm in clear, complete agreement. I, this, I don't think this is a very good return for that kind of investment.
And we have no shortage of things for county community engagement to do other than CPO. Right? For a lot of people. So
And I, I do want to say that I think each of us have a different perspective because of the CPOs within our districts. There's no question. So you know, that's, I think that that's something that we need to keep in mind as we, as we move forward. And working toward keeping what's good, improving what's good and having an even better involvement process is, would be my goal.
Chair, if I can kind of summarize what I think I heard from, from the board, from a high level. Our staff will work on scheduling a follow-up, a work session with your board. We'll look out at the next few months. It won't be scheduled in May because the work sessions are full with, with budget. At that time, we will come forward with policy questions for consideration for your board. Look, thinking about what is the purpose of CCI, purpose of CPO, the roles. So we'll frame out policy questions that can help shape further direction to staff. The diversity in cities, urban unincorporated role, different districts came out through your conversations. And I know I'm watching Ms. Tillman and Ms. Now taking notes throughout the conversation. So I, yes, so I feel we captured those. So more to kind of come how, how we shape up that conversation. And if individual board members have further thoughts, feel free to reach out.
Thank you. A lot of food for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Angie. So do we have anything else that's come up that we need to take care of? And
Thanks, by the way, for that.
Well, I wish
That was
it had been the eleven by seventeen with the full county.
It would have been nice to be able to read it. I mean
For seventeen.
I'm reading any words on there because it's a seventeen font.
Yeah.
But no, I, I, I didn't know what actual value purpose of it was.
You were supposed to have access to a poster version in your office too. Yep. Daniel's, I asked Daniel to make sure you all had a hard copy of that.
I think I wandered down and looked at yours.
Oh, that's fine too.
And I use it online as well. It's because you can
I just get closer to the poster version.
That doesn't always help me.
So hopefully we'll have the template in our inboxes. I don't usually look at email while we're in work sessions.
I believe you're referring to budget amendment.
Committee.
Yep. Yes. So Mr. Munn and team are currently working on updating procedures and the budget amendment template. That should be in your box hopefully by the end of the day today.
Great. Doesn't appear to be quite there yet. Well, hopefully they
It's not quite the end of everyone's day yet.
If I send a template and separate the two, that would be really great.
Great. This is about nine thirty.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything else? Okay, our meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.